I'd like to call to order the July 13, 2020 Apex Planning Board meeting. I would like to ask Reggie Skinner if you would do the invocation, please?
Everybody bow your head. Father God, thank you for another day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the town of Apex. Give us some wisdom and discernment to make decisions that are right for the town and the residents. We ask these things in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Would everybody please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Diane, do we have any items of information?
None today.
Okay. At this time, we'll start the public comment. This is for allow the public to speak on any non, on any items that do not appear under the public hearing section. Any members of the public wishing to comment on public hearing items should wait until the appropriate time for that part of the agenda. The public comment period is inappropriate for the public to express concerns or opinions, but is not intended to be a question and answer session. During the public comment, the public may comment in any non-public hearing, including the new business items that appear at the end of the agenda. Comments from public on new business will not be taken later in the agenda, so if you wish to speak on any new business items, you need to speak at this time. All comments need to be limited to three minutes, and when your three minutes is up, I will ask you to follow up with your comments. Is there anybody that wants to have any public comments on any non-public agenda items at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the first, the consent item number one, the meeting minutes from the June 8th, 2020, regular meeting. Are there any comments or additions or changes to those meeting minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve amendments from last meeting.
Second from Mark. Do we have a second? A second from Keith. All those in favor approving the minutes from the June 8th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matt passes the unanimous. At this time, we will start the public hearing. So this is for any of the following items, items one, two, and three today. As I mentioned, topics will be limited to three minutes each for each speaker, and if there's a topic that you, has already been expressed, please just say I agree with that previous person's comment and move on to new topics. So at this time, Sarah will come up to present rezoning case 20CZ05, the West Village Pod Amendment.
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Sarah.
I am presenting case 20CZ05, West Village Pod Amendment. We are looking at a parcel here in this general area. We have Old US-1 here, 540 coming along here. Bring it in a little bit closer. We are looking at the site located here at 2412 Kelly Road. This parcel is approximately a little over 35 acres. This is part of West Village Pod, which is down, continues down here to the south. We also have West Village Pod over here on the other side of Kelly Road and West Winds, single-family residential over here to the west. This property is currently under construction for development of West Village Pod, so you'll be able to see that here in that area. The current zoning for this particular parcel is Pod CZ, case number 15CZ33. The amendment is for a planned unit development conditional zoning proposal. Here you'll see that, consistent with other zoning in the area, you have Pod CZ to the south and east, and rural residential over here to the west in the West Winds community. The 2045 land use map identifies the property subject to this rezoning as medium-density residential and mixed-use high-density residential office employment commercial services. The proposed rezoning to planned unit development conditional zoning is consistent with that land use classification. Here are the existing conditions. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on April 22nd, 2020. That neighborhood meeting report is attached. So I'm going to read out the change. There is only one proposed change with this Pod Amendment, and that is to some buffer language, so I'll read that out here for you in a moment, but just to give you a visual, we are talking, just, the language impacts this area right here, from this line, right The current Pod language up here to the top remains the same, so it is additional language, and I will now read that for you. So the, this buffer condition for Section 10 Natural Resources and Environmental Data, Section D Landscape Buffering and Screening is proposed to. This Pod will be subject to and meet the requirements of Section 8.26 of the UDO buffering as provided for within. Please note the perimeter buffer associated with the westernmost property line has been increased above the minimum 10-foot required buffer in order to provide additional screening to the residential land located to the west of the project area. While a majority of this westernmost buffer includes 30 feet of undisturbed buffer and 10 feet of type A, 40 feet total, a portion of the 40 feet, 40-foot buffer along the western side of pin number 1798 will be distributed and replanted to meet type A standards, creating a 40-foot type A buffer as shown on Sheet C2. Allowing grading in this portion of the buffer will allow for reduced retaining wall height as requested by the neighboring property owner. We also received an email today. It's what I passed out to y'all, and I will read that for you now. My wife and I support the amendment and would like to thank the developer for working with the neighborhood to bring a water line and fire hydrant to our street on South Winds Many of the wells in the neighborhood are inadequate, and assistance with obtaining water was one of the key requests from the neighborhood during the original zoning process. We would also request continued assistance from the town in bringing water to our street. This is from Timothy and Cynthia Donnelly, located at 2508 South Winds Run, Apex. Planning staff recommends approval of 20CZ05 West Village Pod Amendment with the conditions as offered by the applicant. Oops, sorry. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions for Sarah at this time? The applicant like to make a statement at all?
I'm Josh Decker with McAdams Company. On behalf of the applicant, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have, but what she has presented is the only change to the zoning.
Anybody have any questions for Josh?
Were the Donnellys, the family that you referenced?
Yes, sir.
So this is coincidental that they were, sent this email? Was it a different neighbor that was asking for the?
Yes, Joey Ione is the neighboring property owner that asked for this modification.
At this time, we will open up for public comment. Anybody wishing to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for possible motion or comments. This is pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Motion to approve?
So you have some, motion by Keith. Thirty seconds, so any other comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number two, Shannon is going to present the amendments to the thoroughfare and collector street plan map and the transit plan map. That was quite a document.
Yes.
Yes. Prepare yourselves for a presentation.
A little written.
Good evening, everyone. I will try to make this as clear as possible. This is a complicated proposal here, and I would suggest that the planning board consider taking action following the next item, which is the rezoning case. So some of the proposed amendments to the transportation plan are related to the rezoning case, so I'd just like you to have full information before making your recommendation. So we do have numerous proposed amendments to the transportation plan to consider today. The first is to our transit plan map, which is shown on the screen. You can see that we currently have three blue circles here, one in downtown, one between NC 540 and Apex Barbecue Road along South Salem Street, and then one southeast of US-1 in the future Veridia area. Those represent future rail stations, so those are rail and bus transit centers. The idea is this is where people would pick up, get on, get on a train, and then buses would also help to get people to those train stations. These were added to our transit plan map when light rail was a consideration in this area. Light rail is really not on the table anymore. Wake County is moving forward with commuter rail. One of the differences between light rail and commuter rail is the spacing of stations. So while light rail, you might have stations that are half mile to a mile apart, for commuter rail, usually the minimum is about two miles. Flip to the correct page here. So there are some lessons learned from the current commuter rail study that's happening for the segment from Morrisville to Garner that we looked at for our transit plan map. A peer review was conducted of commuter rail stations across the country, and based on that, in Wake County, the recommendation is that in areas with medium to high density, which is defined as 10 or more people plus jobs per acre, stations should be at least two miles apart. In areas with relatively low density, they should be about five miles apart, to get used to the new accessory. So the Federal Transit Administration also did some research and actually recommends ideal commuter rail station spacing of three miles, and density is much higher than that, 25 to 35 dwelling units per acre and over 100 employees per acre around commuter rail. So what we have here is approximately two miles between this station and the future downtown station, and less than two miles between this station and the future Veridia station. Also, our land use in this area for what's called Salem villages, the zoning conditions restrict that to four dwelling units per acre, which would be about 10 people per acre. Our future land use map shows this area as medium-high-density residential, which is similar to Salem villages. So based on station spacing guidance, both current and future land use, staff are recommending removal of this midpoint rail station. There are also some design-related reasons for this recommendation, which are included in your staff report. I won't go into detail about those. The Transit Advisory Committee has not had a chance to meet and deliberate about this recommendation. I did share this with them by email, and I have not received any notes of concern about this recommendation. So I'd like to pause with the transit plan map and see if you have questions about this before I move on.
Anybody have any questions for Shannon?
So the proposal is to remove the station on South Salem in the middle, is that correct?
That's right, right here.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to preview this discussion and kind of orient you first to the slides. There's a lot to look at here. So we're basically grouping proposed amendments to our thoroughfare and collector street plan map in two scenarios, and I'm going to kind of let the cat out of the bag. Scenario one, it has staff recommendation. Scenario two is requested by the applicants for the rezoning case, which is next on your agenda. There's similarities between these two, and there's differences, which I will explain. So I'll go between these two slides, and then I will, at the end, show you, because there's a lot to look at, what the map would look like if we move forward with either of these scenarios. I would suggest that you look at page eight in the staff report and kind of follow along this table. I will present these in this order, and this table compares whether an amendment is shown in scenario one, scenario two, whether it has staff recommendation or applicant recommendation. And please stop me along the way if you have questions. Okay. So the first proposed amendment is to remove this future realignment of South Salem Street. So you see the X's here. That realignment is on our collector street plan because of the commuter, the rail station shown there. So basically, if we don't, if we remove the rail station, there's really no need to have the realignment there. That recommendation is consistent in scenario one and scenario two. Okay. Next one. So Row B is to remove the future roundabout shown at South Salem Street and Apex Barbecue Road. This was added to our plan based on a study that we did in 2016. It was based on 2013 traffic data. Even at that time, we noted that we would have to plan on future multiple lanes for this roundabout. We have better traffic information, it would not operate well. In addition, it's close to the railroad, which means we would have to shift everything away, and it would require additional right-of-way. So that change is shown in both scenario one and scenario two. Okay. Here's where we get to the differences. Scenario one shows, it's really hard for me to see the mouse from this far away, shows relocating this future grade separation of South Salem Street to this location, and realigning this major collector street, which goes from Woodall Crest Drive and connects to Tingen and Widger Lane, relocating it from this location to this location. This recommendation is based on a study led by our regional MPO, the Southwest Area Study. They had a, at our request, they had a roadway engineer look at this alignment and recommended shifting it away from the 540 ramps. This also avoids some stream impacts. This is a conservative alignment. It's based on a 60 mile per hour design speed, so when we get further along, it could be adjusted, but we're conservative at this point. So this is shown in scenario one only. Row D, which is scenario two, shows removal of the grade separation and removal of this, this roadway. So Attachment one, this is a request from the applicants of the rezoning case. Attachment one to the staff report provides their detailed reasoning, which includes relatively low traffic projections of about 5,100 vehicles per day by the year 2045, the substantial land area that would be required to build a bridge over South Salem Street and the railroad, the anticipate, and the anticipated cost estimated at $20 million of constructing this future crossing. So the applicant correctly cites the projected traffic volumes on this roadway from the Southwest Area Study. So we reached out to Campo to see what's going on. These traffic projections come from the regional travel demand model. One of the inputs to that is anticipated residential dwelling units in the area. So for the area kind of roughly bounded by 540, South Salem, and Apex Barbecue Road, the regional travel demand model estimates 333 single-family dwelling units by 2045 and 18 multifamily units. That's compared to 1,500 dwelling units proposed for the same area by 2028. So something's wrong with the regional travel demand model, and it does have weaknesses. It's, it's placing dwelling units for the entire area, and so, you know, there's some issues with relying on the regional travel demand model only. I also wanted to note that the travel demand model projects, for example, 6,500 to 6,700 vehicles per day on Apex Barbecue by 2045, which is roughly equivalent to what DOT measured in 2018. In addition to the capacity provided by this future roadway, it will serve a critical role in vehicular connectivity. There are limited opportunities to cross South Salem Street. If we look at both existing and planned connections and include toll facilities, there's 1.3 miles between our future Apex Peakway Crossing and NC 540. If we eliminate consideration of toll roads, there's 1.8 miles between Pleasant Plains Road and Apex Peakway. And if we don't consider toll roads or future roads, there's 2.4 miles approximately between Pleasant Plains Road and Tingen Road. Even conservatively thinking that that 5,100 vehicles per day would be displaced onto Tingen and Pleasant Plains, that's putting pressure on other roadways. In addition, by removing the vehicular connection, we're also moving the side path proposed on that roadway and losing an opportunity for vehicular, or bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. While our current focus is on development on the west side of South Salem Street, we also need to keep in mind the substantial potential for development on the east side, and that development will also need to have a connection across South Salem Street. The grade-separated crossing was originally added to the transportation plan in 2002. It was retained with the updates in 2011 and 2019 and the small area plan here, so this has had substantial public involvement, engagement. I did not do a good job of stapling. Moving on. Another difference between the two scenarios is scenario two proposes to remove the grade separated crossing of NC 540, which would remove this extension of, I'll call, Holland Road, east of Kelly Road to South Salem Street. Scenario one does not include that removal. This is a request from the applicant. I'll summarize the reasoning as low 2,600 vehicles per day projected traffic volumes by 2045, concerns about potential conflicts with the gantries and tolling system on NC 540, the anticipated need for substantial fill and potential environmental impacts and costs, redundancy with South Salem Street, and concerns about bisecting planned residential areas associated with the rezoning case. So the same issues regarding the regional travel demand model apply here. I won't go into those in detail again. This future roadway would also provide important connectivity. As a reminder, the intersection of Kelly Road and Old US-1 Highway is anticipated to become right in, right out in the future. So southbound travelers on Kelly Road that wish to make a left turn onto Old US-1 would need to either go through West Village or use Apex Barbecue Road and this, or this network of collector streets. So again, that's moving traffic onto other roads that could use that crossing. In addition, in conversations with our fire department, they indicate that this connection is important for access to this area from fire station number five, which is at the corner of Kelly and Apex Barbecue Roads. They also see this as another relief valve if there is an emergency. So redundancy in this case is a positive thing. The staff recommendation in scenario one is aimed to help address some of the concerns raised by the applicant, so let me present that. This is in Row F. So this recommendation is to change the functional classification of this roadway from a three-lane thoroughfare to a major collector street, which is more in keeping with the land uses anticipated in this area, dense, walkable. We also did look at the alignment of this roadway. We still, based on, you know, the data that we have, without doing a detailed engineering study, this crossing of 540 still appears to be the best location. We are recommending a slight adjustment to the alignment to try to make this a more perpendicular approach. There is a stream right here, so we are recommending shifting this south to try to avoid impacts to that stream. Make sure I covered that. Okay. Okay, moving on to Row G. Those were the major changes that drove everything else. So once you pull a string, you know, it kind of shifts everything else in the area. So now, west of South Salem Street, we're recommending revisions to the future network of collector streets because of these realignments. So removing the realignment of South Salem and adjusting this alignment resulted in some necessary changes to these minor collectors and major collector streets. However, we are still recommending a major collector street connection to South Salem as well as a minor collector street connection to Apex Barbecue and then two to South Salem Okay, so similarly with scenario two, there would need to be some revisions to the collector street network, although they're different. So in this case, the major collector street instead would still connect to South Salem Street. We'd still have two minor collector street We'd still have two minor collector street connections to South Salem and one minor collector street connection to Apex Barbecue Road. So if the planning board recommends approval of the grade, removal of the grade separated crossings, which staff do not support, we can support this network of collector streets requested by the applicant. Does that make sense? Okay. All right. So east of South Salem Street, there are some changes that are only relevant to staff recommendations, not the rezoning case. So they're just shown in scenario one. The first is to shift this collector street further away from the railroad tracks. That will allow for that grade separated crossing to meet back up with the collector. In looking at this roadway, we're also recommending upgrading the portion that's currently shown as a minor collector street, which allows residential driveways to a major collector street. This roadway will connect two thoroughfares. It's just, we don't recommend having residential driveways directly accessed. Looking further south, because of the shift in the alignment, we are recommending shifting this minor collector street shown here slightly to the east, which would also use existing right-of-way for Tingen Road. There's also a necessary shift in this roundabout. And this is all associated with the new alignment for this roadway. Again, associated with that roadway, we are recommending a slight shift to this minor collector street extending off of Padstone Drive just to connect to the realigned major Finally, we're showing, we're recommending to show some local connector streets. These are typically residential streets. We'd like to add them to the plan so that we're transparent to the public about what's anticipated as far as connectivity in this area. So there's one shown here. One extending from Flint Valley Lane. And then one right here. In summary, this is what scenario one would look like. Removal of the roundabout, removal of the realignment, adjustment of this major collector street, adjustment of this alignment, changing the functional class to a major collector street, revised collector street network here, and revised collector street network in And this is scenario two. Removal of those grade separated crossings, removal of this realignment, removal of the roundabout, and revisions to the collector street network. The applicant for rezoning case 20CZ01 requests the amendments to the thoroughfare and collector street plan map described as scenario two and shown in this figure. Planning staff recommend the amendments to the thoroughfare and collector street plan map described as scenario one and shown in this figure. We have consulted with staff from Public Works and Transportation, Fire, and Police, and they're supportive of the scenario one recommendations. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Couple of questions.
Okay.
So major thoroughfare collector is not usually a three-lane road, but a four-lane, two in each direction, correct?
So we, on our plan, have three-lane, four-lane, and six-lane thoroughfares. Major collector is usually one lane in each direction. We can have turn lanes as needed. And then the main difference between a major collector and a minor collector, the main difference is no residential driveways on a major collector.
And then grade separation is not a word for a bridge?
I meant to say that, yes. Bridge or underpass.
Or tunnel.
But in this case, we would anticipate a bridge.
Bridges are cheaper than tunnels.
And the railroad makes the tunnel complicated.
The Apex Peakway transition we talked about, that was supposed to have a bridge grade separation there, correct?
Yes, so the Apex Peakway is planned as a bridge.
When I read this, it implied that the Peakway Bridge was a given. Is that, is it a given?
So until it's constructed, I'm not going to say it's a given. But we, we're in final design for that project. Actually, I think we're in the process of purchasing right-of-way for that project. You know, it's full steam ahead at this point.
As we make our decision, do you think we should assume that that will go ahead?
I think that, you know, until something's on the ground, it's, you need to be a little bit careful. But I would assume that what's on our plan is what's going to happen. It's a matter of timing, really, and what happens first, what development comes before roadways. That's how I would look at it.
Who bears the burden of all the costs on there? Separation's going to be part of it.
So the, we will get into the roadway improvements requested based on the traffic impact analysis in the next presentations. But constructing these crossings is not requested by the rezoning cases. So you could anticipate far down the line, local, state, federal dollars.
That's really important. I'm glad you asked that. Thank you. I was assuming it was the developer.
Preparing, preparing and planning for.
Yeah.
And that's what, you know, I don't want to steal their thunder, but they'll probably present what's shown in attachment one, which is, you know, the land required for preparing for this.
Yeah, it's really the land.
Question, should we have done the previous, the rezoning that's case number three first before this, just to, or does it really matter?
It's, I think it's important to do this first because they need to present whether or not they're consistent with the transportation plan. So I wouldn't, I would do the public hearing, but that's why I'm recommending waiting to take action until you hear both items.
I think we should, once we hear, probably maybe vote on the first, this, the removing the rail station is a separate topic in this discussion. They don't have to all be included as one because there are already two amendments.
So we're voting on two different amendments, is that right?
Well, the first one's removing that. I think it would be, it'll be less discussion.
I could think of it similar to how we divide up UDO amendments from time to time. Yes. So I'll be presenting rezoning 20CZ01, Depot 499-Pod. Get us to cooperate here. There we go. All right, so we are, you're familiar with the location at this point. So the property is bound by Apex Barbecue to the north, South Salem Street on the east, and 540 on the west. Just for some landmarks, we have Scotts Ridge Elementary and Woodall Estates to the north. We have, like I said, South Salem and the railroad to the east of them and 540. And then we have St. Mary Magdalene Church and School is located in this location. So the property is currently zoned residential agriculture with the parcel at the intersection of Apex Barbecue and South Salem being zoned neighborhood business conditional zoning. It's been zoned that way for quite some time. And generally speaking, the surrounding zoning is residential in nature. You have a variety of districts, high-density, single-family, medium-density residential, and then you do have across 540, the West Village PUD, as you could see in pink here. The proposed zoning is planned unit development conditional zoning. And the 2045 land use map designates most of the area to be rezoned, just of 200.8 acres, as mixed-use, high-density residential, office employment, and commercial services, with the balance of the property being medium-high density residential, office employment, and office employment, commercial services in this location. Also point out that this general area is included within a community mixed-use activity There is a proposal to amend the land use map for just this 5.1 acre area here from office employment to high-density residential. The applicant conducted a neighborhood, two neighborhood meetings, one on December 19th and the other on January 29th, and you have those meeting reports in your packet. So with the requested land use map amendment, the proposed PUD is consistent with the 2045 land use plan. Getting into uses. So this is the proposed site layout plan, and I'll give a summary of the breakdown of the uses. So generally, the light yellow areas are for townhomes, although single-family is permitted a maximum of 50 units in this portion of Pod G. The orange areas are for multi, generally for multifamily areas. The red areas are your non-residential areas. I will point out that upper-story residential is permitted, but not required in the red areas. The two purple pods are the mixed-use pods. Those are the only two that require vertical integration, mixed of uses. And then we have two options for the southern portion of the PUD. Land use option one designates these two pods as non-residential or school. And in land use option two, you can see that generally it is all non-residential in nature. The primary difference between these two is the road network. And I'd also like to point out that while land use option one does say non-residential or school, there is no guarantee that a public or a private school would be constructed here. But should a school locate here, the desired road network, there is a change in the desired road network, and so that is the primary reason for the differences here. I'll point out the points of access. We have the major collector that Shannon referred to earlier extending from Woodall Estates. And so generally, this teal color are the major collectors. The blue is minor collectors, and that would take you out to a full movement access point onto Apex Barbecue. Well, I'm, yes, here. And then we have two right-in, right-out leftover movements at this location and this location, and two proposed full movement access points on the South Salem Street here at the mixed-use pods and down in this location. And those access types are the same in both land use scenarios. I'm not going to go through all the uses that are proposed by each of the land use categories. I just would like to point out a few things. I already pointed out upper-story residential being permitted in the non-residential areas. Generally speaking, all of the public and civic uses that are proposed within this PUD are restricted to pods R, S, and T, which is in this location over here. The idea being to keep your, the retail core centered around this portion of the PUD closer to the multifamily areas. And I'd also like to point out that all drive-through, drive-through facilities must be located within a multi-tenant building. No freestanding drive-through facilities are permitted. The use bar, nightclub, wine bar, or taproom is proposed, and there are hours of operation limits indicated in the PUD for that, 12:00 AM Sunday through Thursday and 2:00 AM Friday and Saturday. So just wanted to point out those two. But generally speaking, a variety of retail office uses and services allowed within the non-residential and mixed-use pods. The applicant has also proposed an affordable housing condition that generally states that they are willing, they are offering to contribute $100 per residential unit at the time of building permit to either a fund established by the town, or if a fund is not established by the town by January 1st, 2025, that it will be put in escrow and then conveyed to a nonprofit housing provider. They've also proposed that all affordable housing units may be provided in any development pod within the project and may be counted as non-residential for the purpose of meeting the minimum 30% non-residential needed within mixed-use areas. And they have defined affordable housing as housing that is on average, that is, sorry, that on average is affordable to a household with an annual income that is no greater than 60% of the area median income for the Raleigh MSA. During the review of this rezoning, staff had suggested a certain number of units, either townhome or apartments, be set aside for affordable housing or a dedication of approximately two acres of land that could be set aside for a developer to come in and build affordable housing. And this is based on Peak Plan calling for more affordable housing, especially for older adults. The size of this dedication is based upon a recent development in the town of Cary that provided 42 senior affordable housing units on just under two acres of land. And so if the desire by ultimately council is to accept a contribution as proposed by the applicant, staff believes the donation amount should be equivalent to the fair market value of two acres, as opposed to the amount offered. So going through, I'm going to hit some of the highlights of the design controls within the pods. In the mixed-use area, which is again is in purple, the proposed minimum building height is two stories with a maximum of 80 feet. Staff had suggested that this height, minimum height, be three stories. This is the only area where there's a true vertical integration of uses proposed, is also the gateway to the development on South Salem. And in addition, the height of the apartments in all of the development will not be less than three stories. And so we felt that the mixed-use pods should have a height that was comparable at a minimum of three stories. In the non-residential areas, the minimum height is one story with a maximum of 100 feet. And the resident, and the maximum square footage of non-residential areas, 650,000 square feet of non-residential. For the residential areas, there's a maximum of 850 apartments and 650 townhomes or single-family, although only 50 of that 650 could be single-family. The focus is on townhomes. The maximum building height for single-family and townhouse is 45 feet, although limited to two stories in this section here adjacent to Woodall. If more than two stories is proposed here, the buffer must increase to 50 feet. And then for the apartments, there's a minimum height and a maximum height. So along both road frontages, Apex Barbecue and South Salem, the minimum height is four stories, but 25% of the buildings along that frontage may be three stories. And the maximum height is six stories or 90 feet. However, the first row of buildings along Apex Barbecue closest to the road cannot exceed four stories. So that provides a tiered height away, away from the road. Moving on to buffers, generally everything in green, in the lighter green are buffers and R- and RCA areas. The darker green indicates active recreation or pocket parks. So in this development, since it was a mixed-use area and the desire was to have more of an urban-style development, along both Apex Barbecue Road and South Salem Street, there is a street skate buffer that's proposed, 15 feet along South Salem and 30 feet along Apex Barbecue Road. And this street skate buffer is modeled after the pedestrian-oriented street skate buffer that is permitted inside the peakway, which allows more hardscape elements and street trees planted in a different way than you would see in a more, along a more suburban frontage, to give an enhanced pedestrian experience along those road frontages. As you can see, along the north, there's a stream that separates the development, so we get 100-foot or parry and buffer along the north here. Adjacent to Woodall, where I referenced earlier, there's a minimum 30-foot type A that's being offered, which would increase to 50 if the townhomes are taller than two stories. And along 540, we have 100-foot type A buffer along pods C, D, and T. And then along R and S, the buffer would be 50-foot type A. And then there's also buffers proposed along all internal major and minor collectors, except where there are street trees provided that meet, generally meet the planting requirement of that street front buffer. And then no street front buffer would be required, as they, there would be the provision of street trees within the right-of-way. Generally speaking, the architectural standards are comparable to what we see in many rezonings. This is the elevations that the applicant provided showing both front-loaded and rear-loaded townhome styles, as both are proposed, and a variety of possible elevations for the The applicant has committed to providing solar on at least 15% of any single-family home within the development, and solar conduit on all single-family homes proposed. There are also non-residential design standards that are to direct the development to be of that urban style. And there's also a commitment to providing solar conduit on every non-residential building with a flat roof, not to include public and private schools. Public art is, locations have been identified within the plan. Parking is generally consistent with what's allowed in the UDO, but there is some flexibility proposed to grant the planning director some flexibility in parking reductions. We are warranted by a traffic, a parking study. RCA requirement in this area is 20%, and that is being provided. The applicant is also proposing a condition to pay a donate, or to provide a donation of up to $10,000 to a local nonprofit organization with a mission towards tree preservation and tree replacement. And this is based upon an estimate of what they believe they will be able to replace in tree canopy that's removed during development. And so when they estimated what they were taking down and able to replace the amount that was left, they estimated the cost of that to come up with the donation amount. At least two bus stops will be provided within the, within the development, as well as the amenities that come with those developments. And I'd like to point out the walkability features of the development. Sidewalks will be required on both sides of all streets within the development. There are areas where side path is required, such as along the major collector here and along South Salem Street. There is a network of private walking trails that surround the development and are dispersed through. If Wake County Public Schools grants approval, a greenway connection to Scotts Ridge Elementary is proposed, but that is subject to Wake County Public Schools approval. And the applicant is committed to off-site improvements for sidewalk or side path along South Salem and Apex Barbecue generally here, filling in some missing gaps. Road improvements. There's a lot of road improvements required and proposed by the applicant in this development. And I will point out that if a school does locate within the PUD, that a, an updated TIA will have to be considered, as that was not considered in the original TIA. Generally speaking, the conditions, road improvement conditions in the report do match staff's recommendations, but there are three exceptions, and those are the ones that I'll highlight. Generally speaking, it was a difference in a couple of suggested turn lanes that were not offered, or turn lanes that staff believed needed to be longer, where the applicant did, did not agree with the length of the turn lane suggested by, by staff. The road improvements are divided up into two phases. And so generally, phase one improvements are 450 townhomes or single-family, 400 apartment units, and 150,000 square feet of commercial development. And phase two improvements are, must be done before more than 600 townhomes, 600 apartments, or 300 square feet of commercial development are proposed. And I'm not going to go through the holices, because they are detailed in your staff report and in the PUD text. Russell Dalton is here. If you have any questions at all that is related to traffic, he'd be the best person, of course, to answer those for you. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Commission recommended that a fee in lieu be paid rather than dedication as part of this rezoning. This project is not located within a land dedication area, and there are no proposed greenways that are shown within the property. Planning staff can recommend approval of the proposed 2045 land use map amendment. The staff cannot recommend approval of the proposed rezoning without the following changes to the PUD. Transportation plan amendments. Staff does not support the proposed amendments to eliminate the grade-separated crossings. If the town council approves the amendments to the thoroughfare and Collector Street map to remove those, or if the applicant agrees to amend the plan to include them, then this reasoning becomes moot, this point becomes moot. The second point, transportation improvements. The transportation improvements that are highlighted in your staff report, staff believes are necessary for this rezoning, and without commitments to these improvements, staff cannot recommend approval. Affordable housing, as I referenced earlier, staff believes that more commitment is needed for affordable housing in this area, whether that be land set aside, or if council agrees to accept a contribution, then an amount equivalent to the fair market value of two acres. And building height, staff believes that the mixed-use pods should be a minimum of three stories in height, as previously explained. And those reasons are also why staff believes that the rezoning is not reasonable and in the public interest. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I guess the question I have is, are we supposed to be voting on Shannon's proposal before yours, or no?
So I believe what's appropriate, if you have any questions before you open the public hearing on the rezoning, I'll be happy to answer those, or Russell, whomever. But then the public hearing should be opened on both items, because they, for the most part, these are interrelated items. And then, as Mr. Marx mentioned earlier, if you feel like the transit plan map amendment wants to be separated out as a separate vote, that's necessary. But in order for us to say this PUD is consistent with all plans, then the vote for the transportation plan amendment has to happen before the rezoning.
And then, could you let President Fu or Dr. Kat speak to the conversation with the townhomes and schools?
So, yeah, you have to push to hold for that one to hear you, unlike what you're used to. So I know the applicant has had conversation with the school system, and I will let them speak to that.
I did the math. If I did, if I did the math correctly, what they're offering for affordable housing, this fund only totals up to about 135 or 140K versus if it was the value of two acres. It sounds like you'd prefer two acres, but if it was just the value of two acres, it'd be closer to 400K, I think. So there's about a three-to-one difference. Do I have, did I do the math right?
Well, there's up to 1,500 units proposed, which would be 150,000. That's assuming they can max out their, their density.
But the land there in that area is probably worth 200K an acre.
I don't have that information specifically.
Okay. So it, would you prefer two acres set aside, or would you prefer, let's say, $400,000 be put aside for affordable housing? Which would be better?
I, I think we would leave that decision up to council. I mean, if there's land available, we know there are affordable housing builders that are looking for places to build.
Yeah.
And so...
Well, we have, we've had a couple come by us that we, that haven't happened yet.
Right.
So, okay, I got it. Okay. Super. Thank you.
Some of the other questions for Amanda before we hear from the applicant. Thank you, Amanda.
I'm going to take this down, if that's okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Jamie Schwader with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street. I'm here on behalf of Lennar, the applicant here. And because we're combining the two public hearings, I think it'd be appropriate for us to just combine my time on both of them, extend to the, beyond the nine minutes, if that's all right with you. What I'd like to do is address the zoning first and then come back to the transportation plan, because as both Shannon and Amanda mentioned, the two are interrelated, and I think you need to see a little bit more of kind of what we're offering in terms of the zoning to really understand why some of the things in the transportation plan just aren't possible to attain the goals and the commitments that we've, we've committed to. So I'm here on behalf of Lennar. I'm joined tonight by Stephen Dorn with Bob Zemwalt with McAdams, and Rynell Stevenson with Raimy Kemp. They're our development team. And it's significant, I think, that this group is here before you tonight, because this project is a little different than I think Apex has seen in the past. It really provides a mixed-use, wholly-integrated mix of uses in an area that Apex has designated for this type of density and use and mix of services for some time. And this team has just rolled off of delivering several of those projects in and around this area. So some of the things you'll see tonight are us hearing the intent of the staff and looking at your code, and maybe we haven't provide, met that goal in exactly the same means, but we're trying to deliver it into the ultimate end that we think will not only satisfy the goals of the town, but be a viable and vibrant project, deliver the commercial in a way that the land won't sit vacant, make vertically-integrated uses work in a way that we can get financing, especially in these times. So I'd like you to just keep that in mind as you hear how we've approached some of these goals and why some of what we're offering is not exactly consistent with what staff is offering, but still meets the goals and the intent of Apex and is in the public Okay, as, and I'd like to thank staff. They've been excellent in helping us kind of work through this size of, a project this size, and made some excellent recommendations along the way. Tonight, we'll cover these key aspects, and I'm going to go in this order. The mix of office, commercial, residential, and school uses, the walkability commitments that we're offering with this project, the transportation improvements, trees and sustainability, the elementary school site, the affordable housing contribution, and then the necessary transportation and land use plan amendments that are required in order to deliver a project of this magnitude and a investment of this size. And why I call them necessary is that what we have here is something that commonly happens when you do long-range planning. There's transportation goals, and there's planning goals that are made at some point in time. And then things evolve as, as planning goes forward. Transportation projects have funding, they lose funding. And then individual zoning cases come in. And the actual merits and the topographical changes on the actual site sometime conflict with what those long-range plans show. There's nothing wrong with that. It's just an exercise of looking at the macro versus the micro. And so when you look at the two things that we, that staff is not able to recommend approval of tonight, I think it's what you're doing is taking that macro-long-range plan and looking at this individual site and where the inconsistencies are. And in order for us to deliver what your land use plan requires, it's not possible for us to also deliver what those two grade-separated crossings require, and I'll show you that tonight. Okay, starting with the comprehensive plan guidance, I think is wonderful that you all just went through this exercise, because the 2045 future land use map reflects some of the goals that were planned for this area from a long time. The community mixed-use activity center is shown there that has the mix of high-density residential in orange, the office and employment in blue, and the commercial services in red, and that this area was designed for a mix of those uses at a key interchange along South Salem and 540. Your comp plan defines community mixed use as it should be anchored by large commercial use, such as a grocery store, additional retail, and commercial services, should be oriented on internal network of streets. Office and recreation facilities are also appropriate, and apartments and townhomes in close proximity to retailers for more daily trips taken on foot and bike. And that's exactly what we'll show you tonight. This area also calls for residential density of up to 14 units per acre. 30% of that acreage is intended to be non-residential use, the commercial use that we've, and office use that we've shown, and the vertical and horizontal mix of uses that Amanda explained. We've nailed kind of the high-density, the 30%, and that vertical integration, and incorporated that into our PUD. And so as Amanda explained, we've taken the 200-acre site and broken it out into these different land areas. The yellow that you see is the residential, the red is commercial, the orange is the multifamily, and then there's some areas that are mixed-use, and the purple there in the, in the center is the key kind of mixed-use, the key entrance into the site where we anticipate most of that kind of activity and the excitement and the experience, the arrival point. The blue that you see down there on the bottom of the screen is the area of the reserve for the school site. And Amanda did a great job explaining why we have the two alternatives. When we started this project, we didn't have an agreement with, with Wake County Schools, and so we were trying to hit that 30% mix of uses by putting a commercial use on the corner of that site. It's highly visible, it's kind of right at the key access and interchange. And so we envisioned it for office or commercial. But throughout the process, we've now been able to speak with Wake County Public Schools and representatives here tonight to kind of describe a little bit about their needs and what they see for this site. And because we've now gotten under contract with Wake County Public Schools for this area, we are offering that as an alternative option that we frankly prefer, we believe they prefer, to be the primary option. But if for some reason that wouldn't be able to be implemented, then you have the other option that we've been designing with the staff from the outset. So the program, as Amanda described, is 30% of the site, which is about 650,000 square feet, will be committed to non-residential uses, like retail, restaurants. We include in the school in that and the office, because the school is not residential. We've committed to vertical integration. We're delivering the 850 apartment units, 650 townhomes, and only a marginal amount of single-family homes, because that's the type of product that your future land use plan calls for here, the townhomes and the apartments, and then the commensurate, open space, park, the parks, and trails and greenways. Walkability was an important factor that we heard again and again, not just from your staff, but from the community and from the leaders, that really want to make sure that this area is walkable and accessible to folks that have lived in the area for a long time and the folks that will, will live here when built out. So we are committing to five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street throughout the site, six-foot private walking trails throughout the site, 10-foot side paths and sidewalks along the entire site frontage, so all of South Salem Street and Apex Barbecue that abuts our site. We're committing to two roundabouts on the main collector to slow traffic. And so, I don't know if y'all can see my cursor on that side, but the north-south collector is this right here that's in alignment with the general area you saw on your transportation plan. At some of the early meetings with the neighbors in the Woodall development, they were concerned about speed of traffic, and so we offered to include those roundabouts to provide the connectivity that staff supports, but slow that traffic down. The greenway connection to Scotts Ridge Elementary would make this area, if granted, walkable to two elementary schools, that's something very unique for Apex, planned kind of from the inception. And then we're committing to construct off-site sidewalk on, or sidewalk or side path or fee in lieu along South Salem Street and Apex Barbecue. That's this area here on South Salem, this area on Apex Barbecue. What's significant about that is that you all are already investing in connectivity along Scotts Ridge and Points West. This would complete that walkable portion completely, and then also extending to the north to the White Hall Manor folks, where you have pockets that are not developed. We don't own that land, we don't control it, so we're offering to build it, and if we can't obtain the right-of-way, then we would donate a fee in lieu. We're also committing to up to two high-vulnerability crosswalks on Apex Barbecue. So multiple points of investment, both on and off our site in terms of providing walkability throughout the site and connecting it to existing residents. Yeah, thank you. This diagram down here illustrates what Amanda was speaking about in terms of increasing the amount of street trees. Right now, the, this is an alternate proposal to what the code normally calls for that allows us to pull street trees into this area along the connector so that throughout the site, we're able to incorporate more tree canopy than we otherwise might would have. And Bob Zemwalt is with us today and can talk a little bit about how he's done that in a way that doesn't cause conflict with pipe and conduit. The site traffic commitments, they are extensive, and Rynell Stevenson is here to answer specific questions. But I'd like to just summarize, we have significant commitments onsite, including installing traffic lanes in each of the site drives, widening South Salem Street to a full four-lane section along the entire site frontage. This is significant because there's not significant, there's not sufficient right-of-way on the other side of the street due to the existing railway corridor. So normally, we're only required to dedicate half of ours on our side. We're offering to do the full four-lane section on our side because you can't move the railroad. That's a loss of land to us, it's a loss of cost to us. Obviously, it's increased commitment from our side. We're extending turn lanes on Apex Barbecue at South Salem Street, installing new turn lanes at Apex Barbecue on the site drives, installing the major north-south connector that I showed earlier for the transportation plan, providing two bus stops, installing all the internal streets and collectors. And we estimate the total cost of these onsite commitments are about $5.1 million. Now, that includes a million dollars of improvement above and beyond what NCDOT recommended and required. It doesn't even get to include the cost of right-of-way. So that's just the tip of the iceberg that we would be investing to deliver this. This is a diagram kind of showing where those are. Rynell is much better at using these TIA diagrams, so we'll let him answer questions on that, but it kind of illustrates where these are onsite. And then the off-site traffic commitments. These are significant as well. We're installing, and I won't go through each of them, but significant improvements on Apex Barbecue and Kelly Road to accommodate some of the off-site traffic that's out to the west of us, and increased laneage and turn lanes on South Salem at 540. I think the significant portion about this and where we kind of differ with the staff interpretation or the staff recommendation, I guess I should say, is that all of those areas where we're not making the additional laneage commitment or the length of lane that staff would prefer are areas where we have either low trip distribution or the amount of traffic generated toward those areas are just not significant. So we're doing it at the areas where they are significant, right at our site frontage and right at the major intersections that we impact, but those that are a little further away, we have less impact and less directions there. And this just shows where those improvements are located in space. Of course, the magenta is the expansion of South Salem Street to its full four-lane section. The little light blue is the extension of the sidewalk area there and side path. And then the blue toward the west of 540 are some of the laneage improvements we're doing towards the fire station over there and some of the laneage I just talked about where staff would like those to be increased of it. Again, Rynell is available to answer questions specifically about those. Trees and sustainability. Throughout the process, we heard how can this, even though it's a large-scale mixed-use project, how can we increase our tree canopy coverage or retain what we're putting back? And then how can we make the project more sustainable? So Amanda highlighted the solar commitments that we're making in terms of the PV system on 15% of the single-family homes and conduit on all of the homes. Then we're also creating a new canopy by putting street trees back in the right-of-way, increasing the perimeter buffers, pocket parks, and open spaces. And that was the concept I mentioned earlier that Bob can kind of speak a little bit more to. Because what we showed on the walkability plan was just the major streets, there's going to be internal streets within each of those pods, and within each of those, we'll be able to put back more of this urban street tree grid and increase the tree canopy that we're putting back onto the site. We're doing that all while providing 20% RCA. And then for the residential portion, the project is either retaining, replacing, or making a donation to replace 100% of the existing tree canopy. So what we're doing is looking at how much is on the residential portion today, trying to save as much as we can. What we can't, we replant, and what the balance of that is how we determine the donation. I'd also like to mention that's in addition to the $3.3 million of the fee-in-lue for the parks and recs fee that we'll be paying as requested by the board. The school site. So the school site, as I mentioned, is noted for pods S and R, shown in blue down this way. We're under contract now with Wake County Public Schools who intends to use the land for a new elementary school. Of course, there's a series of approval processes that go with that, but the zoning is one of those processes that they seek to have approved so they can move forward. And what makes that really special, as I mentioned, is that there's very few projects that are designed from the outset with a school site in mind so that you can look at the circulation for your schoolchildren, you can figure out how bus circulation should work, you can kind of go forward hand in hand instead of having residential come and then the school come after. So we have a really unique ability to make all of those adjustments here as we walk through the site plan. And then, of course, the proximity to Scotts Ridge would make this one of the only kind of planned mixed-use developments walkable to two elementary schools if that were to come to pass. A really exciting opportunity for Apex. Okay, affordable housing. We're meeting the town's affordable housing commitment in two different ways. The first way is the physical commitment. So we're focusing on townhomes and apartments. And that's significant because we know that those types of products are typically easier to provide at a lower price point with the right amount of treatment instead of just focusing on single-family. There are more efficient use of land, and it's what your code requires or suggests for the land use plan in this area. We're also planning a variety of six-floor plans for townhomes to allow for lower price points, which we estimate to start in the 200,000s. And that's also significant because, as you know, the price points of townhomes in this area have escalated a good bit, and we're working hard to provide smaller floor plans with primary residents down or master down so that you have that variety and are able to age in place. The second commitment is that we're providing what amounts to be about 150,000 contribution to Affordable Housing Fund. And let me explain how we came up with that. We've done projects kind of throughout the triangle, and one of the areas that has an established Affordable Housing Fund that does this regularly is Durham. And they look at voluntary commitments because the town can't require the payments to be made, it can't require the land to be set aside for affordable housing. And so what folks do is they make a voluntary contribution. And so we modeled that off of Durham's program and said $100 per unit to be paid over time. Now, because you all don't have a fund existing, what we said is we're going to delay that time to 2025, give you time to set up a fund, and if for whatever reason the town hasn't set up a fund, then we'll make that donation directly. With respect to the land set aside, we included something in here that says the affordable housing can go anywhere. So if there's developers that are interested in doing this and that terms can be worked out, they can locate on any of the pods here. We're just not able to meet all of the requirements and intent and the density that's required and offer that set aside. So it's a combination of having multiple competing interests and trying to do as much as we can. Even though we don't hit it 100%, we're trying to hit as close to 99% as we can. And for these reasons, we think the zoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it meets the intent of each major applicable planning and transportation objective, it's consistent with your 2045 land use map, the buffering and roundabouts minimize the adverse impact, the transportation plan amendments are necessary to deliver a viable project, and the type of use that was envisioned in your 2045 land use plan, which is this community mixed-use high-density area. The viable affordable housing offers allow residents to age in place with the combinations I just mentioned, and then significant tree canopy save and replacement is balanced with the density requirements of the community mixed-use designation. Recall that that was close to 14 units per acre, so we're not in a situation where it's calling for low density, it's calling for this very high-density and active area. Amanda noted that they believe, the staff believes that this, the land use map amendment would make the area consistent with the overall land use map. And just to highlight that, I think the staff recommended approval, this is a separate amendment that just brings that five-acre portion to more in continuity with the rest of the 200 acres, and I've highlighted that area where it shows up on the plan. And then the last two plan amendments that are necessary in order to deliver this significant investment of a project, the transportation plan amendments. So Shannon did a great job in describing all of the amendments that they've brought forward, and the reason I think they're combined is that when we first came to the town and talked about this exciting project, they let us know that they had actually been contemplating some of these transportation plan amendments themselves, and so that they were planning on bringing something forward. And so we kind of worked together about what they were planning on bringing and what we would be required to do in order to make our site viable, and we settled out, and I think just these two grade-separated crossing issues are the only places that the project doesn't really jive with what the town was going to do anyway, or the town was able to make those adjustments to be consistent with the project. So those, I'm showing you on the screen in the black where those two are in space. And this really shows kind of a bird's-eye view prepared by Raimy Kemp of how these two grade-separated crossings impact the plan. And so I think this really is a great illustration of what you can see in 2D versus what you can see in real life in 3D. And so what we have here are the two grade-separated areas here and here, and then we have it overlaid with the pods S and R. So this is the existing track. What you see grayed out is the kind of blue outline of where the school is intended to go, and then the rest of the, you know, commercial and other development areas. And what you see in green is the fill that would be required to get the overpass to a height above the land in order to cross over your train track. So we're not just talking about a connection to the road, we're talking about another connection above that to cross over the railroad. The tunnel would present the same issue, you're talking about a lot of cut going down a lot further. And what we're doing is we're incorporating this area in at the recommendation of staff so that the town can look at the entire area altogether. But to require this transportation improvement in this particular location, you're completely gutting the value of this parcel here and making it completely undeveloped or unable to be used in the balance. The school couldn't be located there, the commercial uses couldn't be located there with the type of cut and fill we're talking about. And so it's just a classic example of you have a long-range plan you have for transportation, you have a long-range plan for land use, and then you have the reality of the site, and the cut and fill is just too significant. This is also a riparian buffer, so there'd be additional issues here with how and whether we'd be able to fill and just present a lot of reality challenges to making that grade separation. This grade separation's a little bit of a different issue, and as you mentioned, it is just a land issue. But the land issue is where this overpass would land in real time. And so this area here would be connected over 540. There's an existing transponder in this area. We would have to get the approval of both DOT and the turnpike authority to do that. We do not have that, it's not certain when or if that would come, it's not certain when or if funding would come for this. But in the meantime, we'd be required to take an overpass way into our site and land exactly where the townhome residential village is planned. And so although it might just seem like a land area, it's a land area in the heart of our project where people are supposed to have peace and comfort in the townhome village and in where the schoolchildren are supposed to be located. So it's a significant impact on us being able to deliver this type of development to the town. And in summary, what we've done, as I mentioned, is maybe in a different way than staff and division, but in a way that we think is viable and vibrant and will provide a really unique project here, is that we provided a mixed-use community consistent with your land use map designation, 650,000 square feet of non-residential uses, including the vertical integration. It completes pedestrian connections throughout the site and along South Salem and Apex Barbecue to the north and west, over $5.1 million in transportation improvements. We're retaining, replacing, or donating 100% of the residential tree canopy. We're putting in affordability measures and affordable housing contribution, and we are under contract with Wake County Public Schools for an elementary school site. We really believe that these efforts have tried to meet the intent and the goals of Apex's plan to the best of our ability and that we're providing something that's really new and innovative and different for Apex. While we respect the staff's inability to recommend approval, we understand it because they have a plan that dictates how the development is supposed to go for land use and transportation, but we have the reality of the microscale of what can actually be done on this site. And so we'd ask you to vote in favor of approving not only the zoning but the land use plan and the transportation plan amendment scenario, too, that are necessary to deliver this significant investment to the town. And I have, our team is here to answer questions. I think it might be easier just to have the questions and then we can decide who's the best to answer them.
Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time?
I have a question. I'll wait till she signs in.
Yes.
So bear with me. I appreciate the cooperation that you all have worked with the town to try to meet both the requirements of the land use map plan, the needs of the community, and what falls under the UDO, and also the needs of the developers. A couple of questions I have, though, as it relates to that, are, I err on the side of listening to what the staff is, understanding, again, that you've taken a lot of this into consideration, but listening a little bit more into what the staff is saying about what the needs are. And a very, very minor, actually, not so minor, but an issue where this actually comes to fruition is in your explanation of the two school sites. Very excited about the fact that there's walkability to two school sites. The unfortunate reality, first of all, let me be clear, I'm incredibly excited that there's conversation with Wake County Public Schools about building a site. As I looked at this initially, that was almost immediately my first concern. So very excited that that conversation is happening. But the reality is, is that Scotts Ridge Elementary is capped. And so while it is phenomenal that there will be walkability to that school, what will happen in reality is that we will have families who have a walking access to that school who won't be able to go. And that's the reality that our community is aware of. And again, a small sort of nuance, right? You don't know if you don't live here, but this just speaks to the fact that the town staff hears and knows and is trying to sort of beat you, and they've made recommendations. And I would encourage you to adopt those recommendations, and I'll be supporting such that. And I give that school, that school example just as something to say that this is something that community understands, the community sees, that the community is going to have to deal with. We're going to have families who are moving in there who aren't going to be able to go to that school. And that's going to be an issue that's going to come up. And we're going to have to answer, we, the planning board, the town council, will have to answer those questions as to how we approved this. And so to be able to come back and say, well, we have this, and we have this, and we have the needs that the staff has expressed, I think goes a long way to that. But I just wanted to reiterate the importance of going back and continuing those conversations with staff and adopting, hearing and adopting their additional concerns. Thank you.
Well, I really appreciate that feedback. I do live here, and I know that school issue is not an easy one. Can you be more specific about the recommendations that you'd like us to?
So you live here at Apex?
I do.
Okay, so you're aware?
Yes, my children attend Olive Chapel.
So do I dare say that maybe you've been moved around a couple of times?
Nope, we've been at Olive Chapel the entire time. And I hear your point on the redistricting. I mean, it's the blessing and the curse of the economic growth that's come to the area. And it's something that if the school, the Wake County school site, and Ms. Parker is here to speak to direct questions about that, but if the district moves ahead with this school site, they will be determining what type of school, the capacity. We understand it could be something close to 750 schoolchildren, elementary school. And so redistricting would have to be a part of the conversation like it is every year because there's just so much growth in this area. The other thing I think you can take into account, I'm dealing with another project down at the coast where it's a similar situation, we're offering a school site, and we're looking at, not just looking at approving the rooftops, but thinking about the timing in terms of when those are all going to come in. You're not going to have 650 townhomes day one. You're not even going to have them year two. They're going to come in phases. And so throughout that time, the school district will be redistricting and figuring out where those schoolchildren will go, and I think the Wake County Schools representative can speak to their timing as well and that we hope to have those married so that we hope to ease that burden.
I bring up the school merely to just, I appreciate that you do live here. I actually live diagonal to this vicinity.
Okay.
So my youngest will be going to Scotts Ridge Elementary in the fall. I understand that people who live just across the street from Scotts Ridge cannot attend Scotts Ridge. Scotts Ridge. So the fact that there's a walkability there is phenomenal, right? Like, we want to be able to get out and walk. But the reality is, is that some of those kids will not be able to attend that school. That's probably the one reality. And I appreciate that you have not had that experience, even though you live here, but that is the reality of many families in this community, especially on this side of town that we're looking at developing. So I just brought, I brought that up merely as an example of where there's, I want you to hear what the staff is saying because there are incidences where you may not be fully aware of some of the concerns that are coming up in the community. And this particular one, the school, did not become an issue because, again, you are, you know, having these conversations currently with Wake County. But the other issues that the staff is raising, affordable housing and transportation, I think speak to the staff's concerns, the staff's concerns as to what they're hearing from the community, and also how it applies to the land use map. So I bring this school conversation, just again to point out that the staff has a broad understanding, and I fully support their recommendations and encourage you all to adopt their recommendations as is.
Thank you.
I want to applaud you for all the wonderful things you're doing. And this is a community I think would be a great addition to Apex. But part of our job is to maintain that macro view that you countered against the micro view. And one of the macro objectives of the town and the planning board is to not have islands of development that aren't truly part of Apex. And so if you kind of zoom back out, if you combine item two and then this item, the rezoning and land use map amendment, what bothers me, even though I love what you're, the product, I really do, I would like to be able to shop and eat there. I live just across 540 over in Friendship, so it would be a great addition to the town and to our neighborhood. But not being able to get across 540 off of Holland and not be able to get across South Salem, to me are, to me personally, really are deal breakers. Because what you end up with is, will end up with your development, beautiful as it is, isolated and kind of choked off. And then south, on the southeast side of South Salem, whatever is developed in there will be kind of choked off from you. And then Veridia, which is going to be massive, won't be able to, people won't be able to flow through and come to the shopping and the commercial things that you're going to have. So it actually is a detriment to your tenants, sorry, your landlords and their tenants. So I actually think the two transportation things that staff recommends and that you're not happy with that are part of item two and that feed into this, to me are deal breakers. I don't, even though I really love all the things you talked about, I couldn't support it without those two things. So, and I know that affects the economics, but that's how I feel.
No, I appreciate those comments. And just to be clear, it does affect the economics, but to be frank, it affects the economics of anybody that would be trying to deliver this here. It's not just about this product and, or this project. It's really, can you achieve what this land use plan designation calls for and be consistent with that designation, which we're required to do, and still be consistent with the transportation plan? And so the town is going to have to make a choice.
Good comment, I agree. You just said, Mark, you got to get across Salem Street. It's just a problem. The Holland one is important, but...
Chairman, we are not talking in the public...
Oh, yeah, okay.
We have public comments that we need to play.
Okay. Any good questions for the applicant before we hear from public?
I do have one question. So I'm excited about the 650,000 square feet of non-residential. Typical elementary schools, what, 200,000 square feet normally?
I don't know that I could speak to that. I don't know.
I'm sure Ms. Parker...
Ms. Parker is here, and maybe during the public hearing, she could address that. Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, if you could open the public hearing for both?
Yes, I will.
That's okay. That's okay. So the public hearing's open?
Yes.
Okay. So we did receive one email, to the public hearing email, and so I'm going to play what was, this has been recorded, so I'm going to play that.
This written comment was submitted by Kathleen Freer of 311 Skinny Pine Court, Apex. She writes, "Dear Town of Apex Planning Board and Town Council, I am a voting resident that lives in Scots Mill. I am writing regarding what I understand to be an application by Stephen Dorn of Lennar to change the designation of a portion of PIN 0731761944 from office employment to high-density residential. As an Apex resident, I am disappointed by the consideration of more high-density residential units in our lovely town, adding to the already explosive development of such units. I understand the mighty dollar is a sweet temptation, but I'm hoping the board and council will overlook that this time and not change the designation of the land use. I believe building more townhomes, apartments, et cetera, is setting this town up to fail in the future. The school situation alone is enough reason to decline this application. I do realize the schools are set by the county, but each elected official in this town has a duty to be smart about what our town can offer. Having more new residents that are angry to find out there's no room at their local school will only continue to breed discontent. Though we aren't responsible for schools' excuse will only carry so far. I'd be happy to see affordable, medium-density senior housing go in, or an office, retail, affordable senior living mixed facility here at this location. But adding more townhomes or apartments in place of office space is simply reckless. I will be watching on July 13th and July 21st. I really hope my town officials won't let me down. Kind regards, Kathleen Freer."
So ma'am, just to be clear, that said, she's discussing that corner on the right?
This small, let me go back to the land use map. She specifically referenced the proposal to change this area from office employment to high-density residential.
That was the only?
That was the only public hearing comment received via email.
Yes.
This time we'll open up the public comment?
Am I going to?
Yeah. You signed in?
Yes, I did.
Okay, just state your name and address, please.
My name is Karen Davis. I live at 1914 Woodall Crest Drive in Apex. This is related to both items two and three on the agenda tonight. Regarding, can I actually use the mouse to show you exactly the part that I'm, is that okay?
Is that right screen?
Yeah, I just can't get the, can't find the mouse. So the Woodall Estates is just north of the proposed development. And looking at the entire transportation plan that was outlined by Ms. Cox, there's a small portion that is now a major collector road, which is Woodall Crest Drive, that goes from Apex Barbecue to the, oh, thank you. Yeah, I just couldn't find the mouse. I mean, so it's less than two tenths of a mile. It's about .19 miles. And right now it's slated at 35 miles an hour, and it is adjacent to a residential area. So I guess the concern is that the benefit of having that being 35 miles an hour, you have to actually turn onto Woodall Crest Drive, and then there would be no stop sign before, after .19 miles, no stop sign. You could either turn right into the development or immediately have homes with driveways. So with just a speed limit, I had some emails, so I was told there'd be a speed limit sign installed there saying it was changing to 25 miles an hour. So with the walkability that was discussed here today, and people wanting to, we have families right now whose children do walk to Scotts Ridge Elementary School, we would respectfully hope that you would consider a 25 mile an hour speed limit or some sort of method to prevent people speeding through that section of our neighborhood to get to the new development and then through to Salem Street as part of the collector.
You're talking about the street that comes off of Apex Barbecue down to where the...
Right, it's gray right now, and then you would have to make a right turn into the development. So from the information that I got through my emails, I was informed that there would not be a stop sign there to, before they would then enter right into the residential part of our neighborhood where there are lots of families and kids and driveways. So that would be the concern. So trying to get that to either be 25 miles an hour or possibly put some other crosswalks or, I'm really not sure what, other than having it be 25 miles an hour, would be the options. But we would like that to be considered as part of the transportation plan. Thank you.
With apologies, I can either read with my glasses or wear this. I can't do both yet. I'm Betty Parker. I'm Real Estate Services Senior Director for the Wake County Public School System, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. There are a number of things that we like very much about this planning unit development. I am in the business of finding needles in haystacks ever since West Wake Treatment Plant came on and 540 came on. My job got immensely harder as growth has exploded. Fortunately, Amanda Bunce and Diane Ken have metal detectors and helped me find a needle in this haystack, suggested I work with Lennar, and I'm so glad that we have looked at it. Some of the things we like a lot about this is that there are great connections throughout for walkability and bike access. We like that for our schools very much. We think the intentionality of that is very positive. Our school needs in this area are significant. I brought some statistics from our presentation when we first put Pods RNS under contract by the Board of Education. We're about 1,000 students over capacity in five schools that include Scotts Ridge, Olive Chapel, Balcom, Apex, and Salem. And right now, that's addressed with 42 trailers. So before you account for the trailers, and these are last year's figures, we're at an average of 134 and 1/2% crowded. Now, there are a lot of neighborhoods that have been permitted since we built Scotts Ridge, and we can't catch up. So trailers are our way to temporarily address that. But even with trailers, we're at 105% with both Olive Chapel and Scotts Ridge capped. So a neighborhood here without a school is a challenge, clearly. But a worse challenge for us is a neighborhood here without a chance to put a school here because there's so few land opportunities. We have a school site plan that's currently under contract. The Board of Education approved acquisition of these parcels in April on the 28th of this year. We have finished all of our due diligence, with the exception of you lovely people. So we're here with you and the town council to see if we can get the rezoning to fit what it is that we need for our part of this neighborhood to work. At the conclusion of due diligence, we're expected to go to the Board of Commissioners for two readings. They want to hear all about the outcome of the due diligence and a good understanding that our feasibility studies have been complete and that we can build what we need on this site without extraordinary cost. The due diligence states that we'll go to the board, we would either go August 17th and September 7th, which is right around the corner, or if we push it way back to September 7th and September 21, and then we hit the end of our contract period. We also hit the timing for when we need to acquire this to move on into the next phase. Our current schedule is that if we're able to complete due diligence satisfactorily and close on this property by the end of September, next fiscal year, we'll be funding the design for the school. The year after that, we'll be funding the construction that's estimated at about $51 million, and the answer is between 135 and 140,000 square feet. That's how big an elementary school is. Our expected opening date would be 2025. So while it will not precede all development in this pod, it will precede a bunch of it. And it's as fast as we can go. Some of the site concerns, the site is a very tight fit, and I applaud both town staff and Lennar's staff in trying to work with us. We have some site constraints for any school. We have adjacency concerns. If a child goes in a school, they need to be able to walk to their playground and not cross the street. Parking has to be sufficient. We have to have onsite queuing to allow parent drop off, and the DOT's MSDA group requires increasing lengths of that. So by the time you put all the fundamental site elements we have on site, even complying with these urban standards and the appropriate parking, we have filled the site up. So what we were able to do, if you look at the upper large blue tract, the reason the lines are so different in the option two and the option one is that's the contiguous buildable area between the streams and the boundaries. We have to have a big area, not necessarily flat, but a large contiguous area. And we've got it, but we fill it up. There's not a lot of extra acreage there. So we've anticipated for that small segment where the road comes, where the road comes off South Salem here, we've anticipated restricting that to bus traffic only. And the more walkable students we have, the fewer buses we have. The MSDA requires a separate entrance for parent drop off. So at this point, we're expecting that to come off of this roundabout. So to be able to establish the two entrance points that we need and to have the building in the middle and to do everything we need to do, unfortunately, the town's long-range plan for bringing that grade separated flyover through there, I think that 3D model pointed it up perfectly. It makes the site completely inviable for us. So if that's something that the town needs to have, we respect your decision, but we won't be able to put a school here. It's just insufficient. So for us, that's the biggest challenge. We would support the amendment proposed to the applicant to remove that. As to the rest of the suggested amendments, that's not my hill to climb. And I'm trying to limit my comments to how it affects the school system and what opportunities we can bring to the fore. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this school site that you graciously held back until now.
Questions for Ms. Parker?
I don't handle student assignment. So dirt, that's really dirt.
So you're saying that it's not going to be, you can build without extraordinary cost, you can't build at all if the bridge goes over there? Is that correct?
Correct. And it's not because of the cost of that. It's just so divisive, and the fill area is just so massive, it cuts right through the heart of it. And again, the area, there's a stream, that's the bounds of 540. There's a stream, that's the only buildable area. When it was first configured this way, and we sent Lennar a plan that looked at this, it was a shock to their conscience to see us want to undo everything. But to fit for us, that's the area we need to make a standard school fit, and that's typically 716 students plus 20 pre-K students. Now, we have looked at what we can do with this area south of the stream. We're not going to be able to separate the student activities for the elementary school, but we have some additional needs. Some of the needs that are being considered in this area would be a pre-K center. So there's some other school-related functions that we can pair. We brought up with Lennar the concept of affordable housing. If we find that we have more land than we can use south of that stream, our process is to go through a surplus property disposition, and our counterparts at Wake County value affordable housing greatly. So we're interested in continuing to collaborate wherever we can. I think it's been an amazing process so far. Staff has been so collaborative, and so has Lennar. I couldn't state it as well as any of the preceding speakers. But unfortunately, for it to fit us, that grade separation extension is just, to quote you, a deal killer. So with that, we would support the zoning so that we could support a school. And again, these road configurations that turned it off was, I think, part of the contribution that our landscape architects provided. And the thought was, how do we continue to keep traffic flowing, give multiple ways out of the subdivision, knowing that we're going to have to ask for this to go away? And with the roundabouts in there, it seems like it's going to be a balanced flow, yet speed restricted just because of those calming devices. So I thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Ms. Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
It is Ms. Parker, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
I just have one...
I just have one quick question. This site, does it allow for a regular-sized elementary school? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. You'll see me again soon. We permitted a smaller elementary school on the Apex Friendship Site, which was restricted by the site itself. And the metal detectors that these ladies have work there too. We were able to work with that developer to add a little more acreage so that we've been able to enlarge the site to a full-size school with no delay in schedule. So keep us in mind when we come back with that.
Thank you so much.
But generally, I presume that's where your concern is coming from. It's a full-size school.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Question for you as well, a couple of questions. Is there anywhere else on this entire site that Wake County could have put a school other than that south corner? That's buildable. I mean, I know right now we're looking at, this is the only spot, that's the only spot that's been offered up.
Well, and I would step back and say...
The reason I'm saying that is because of the grade separation. If that can be done, we're looking at the total number of units of homes that are going to this area. If not now, when? If we need it, we need it. And so that's why I'm wondering if, you know, because what I feel like is Wake County's being pulled into this, which is a lot of help, but I think it can quickly be capped by the number of townhomes there, the number of students that are going to wind up going to the school. I think it's great to marry the two together, but is there not another area that we can still have both, Wake County and do the grade separation? Is there anywhere else that you see that we could build?
To be fair, not that I've looked at and I'll tell you why. When we came to this, I had, after speaking with staff, I had some gentlemen I work with that had to lead to one of the owners of these parcels at the bottom here. There's a large tract that comes this way and it's the lower portion of that red area. So this owner and this owner have graciously allowed us to put under contract with the stream as the boundary, the lower portions of their property. And we've acquired one additional property here and then down in here. These, from this line down, and I apologize to Lennar if I'm saying something I shouldn't, from this line down, I understand was not currently under contract with the developer as they were beginning their PUD. I don't think that had come to terms yet. So from our perspective, we found a site opportunity that we could buy that would fit, that would fit well with the character and the walkable neighborhood that was planned. There's some benefit to being in the PUD in terms of going ahead and taking care of that rezoning now if we can work with the flyover. It's not as if Lennar carved something off for us. It happens to be adjacent, which we think is mutually beneficial. So they didn't shove us down by the highway. That we felt like once we looked at it and planned and designed it, could work well. We have a target area. We have long-range planning folks that work together with the Ored Itchy Lab at State to look at transportation patterns and our crowding and growth patterns to try to predict where the next schools need to be. We have a target ring very close to here, so it fit our macro view, it fits our micro planning ability, but that flyover is the one big thing. So when we understood that was something that they were going to seek to have amended, we thought we may have a chance to make this work. But I hope that answers your questions. I'm not going to ask Lennar to put us somewhere else, but you can do that.
Second part of that question is as far as the number of, you know, units we're looking at, 1,350 units, I'm not sure if how many people that'll be moving there will have children that will attend that school.
Me either.
I have a feeling, how many students, if we're looking at 130,000 square foot elementary school, how many students would that hold? And are we going to basically be building a school only to max it out day one with the, you know, then it doesn't really help the rest of the community is my concern.
Understood, understood. The challenge is the two or three other school sites that we would like to have that can't find. The one we're building out in Apex Friendship Elementary, there's so much growth happening that's already permitted with a PUD right next to that, that's probably going to be full very quickly. Most of our schools fill up very quickly. Scotts Ridge filled up very quickly. The problem is, growth is ahead of us. We are not able to catch up. So I think we're doing the best we can and to plan where there's greater walkability gives us some environmental benefits to keep more buses off, to keep more cars down. There's benefits to being here where we know there's a need.
Ms. Parker, just to go back to your statement, 150,000 square foot is the typical elementary school size?
Between 135 and 140,000 square feet, right.
If I say 150, that's fair. So going back to the applicant, you said 650,000 square foot was what we were looking at. That school, I know is necessary, the retail is very exciting. I don't see how the infrastructure for your proposed streets would support that much retail. I mean, coming off of South Salem Street, if we're at 45 miles an hour and there's been requests to go down to 25 on the back half, how does all that retail with big box stores really support? One option versus the other? I'm not seeing how we can move to that in good faith.
If you're finished with me, I'll be glad to step back and let the expert speak. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, Bob Zomowat with McAdams. I'll make sure I understand your question. So what you're saying is we have 650,000, take away 150 for the school, there's still 500,000. Yeah, that's the max, that's the maximum, yeah. And that would more likely...
Just one...
Yeah, that would much more likely occur in this option down here if all of this were multi-story office. We were trying to accommodate the ability to put like three or four-story office buildings, but you're absolutely right. Once the school comes in, the, I'll give you a, the size of this retail center here would not accommodate a big box. I mean, the biggest grocery would ever fit in there that we looked at is something about the size of like a Trader Joe's. That'd be as big as it would fit. So it would be more of a kind of an intimate village center with, what we're hoping, at least they're targeting, is more restaurants, a village. That's why we have a green shown in the center. I've got a plan for that, that obviously is not committed to this, but the idea is to have a smaller scale, more intimate retail center that people can walk to for, you know, a rooftop restaurant or bar or a small grocery store.
Traffic, highly effective. Especially half of Apex driving to that, which is where my concern is for the traffic.
It could, yeah.
I have a question for Russell. And Russell, I don't expect you to do a whole new plan, but given that we sort of rolled a grenade into the, where the crossing firsthand would go, these other three entrances, I'm looking at this, what's up on your screen? I'm looking at these one, two, three other entrances to the development off of South Salem. Are any of those, especially the one with the traffic circle, are any of those appropriate to have a bridge across South Salem?
We've not looked at any of those. And Shannon may have mentioned during her presentation, you know, part of the origin for the study for these grade separations was, I mean, we have the old Salem Street plan and then we also looked at it through the MPO with the Southwest Area Study. And so that was the information we were going off of. If we looked at another location for grade separation, I can't say that it wouldn't work, it might be more difficult. As you get up further north, you're getting more into where the north end of Salem Village is already developed, so it becomes harder to tie the roadway network back in and get where you need to be. Plus, I think the idea of having it closer to 540 was getting near that area what's supposed to be developed as future office, you know, commercial development down there in that lower quadrant. So, you know, you've got future density, you're trying to connect density to density with substantial infrastructure that developers, you know, either, you know, they're not going to build on their own, so you want to have a lot more value in that land to give a reason to be able to do that.
The flyover would be closer to 540, like right where the exit is, give it 50 feet?
That was the original, wasn't it?
Yeah, well...
That's the original, it was pretty close.
Yeah, and actually, we did, we did try and reach out while they were, while they were developing 540. We wanted to get a grade separation connected to the 540 interchange because there was an opportunity at that time, but they didn't want to talk to us about that. So we lost that opportunity. But, you know, we've had in our plan for a long time that grade separation. And keep in mind, I mean, when we look at a traffic impact analysis, it's not a long-term analysis typically. I mean, when you look at development, really the TIA, the purpose of that is to figure out what the developer's supposed to do as part of their build-out. So when you talk about the big picture, when you zoom out and you look at this area, you know, 20, 30 years down the road, these grade separations are going to become more important as the area develops even more and you get more density. And so since you don't really have that long-term look in the TIA, obviously right now, the developer, you know, you don't see the need, the developer's not going to build them, they don't see a need for it now, but down the road, we see a lot of value in those, particularly with the one that crosses 540 to the west to connect over to Kelly Road, because that's taken a lot of pressure off Apex Barbecue Road, which in our plan, Apex Barbecue Road is only a three-lane road, whereas Salem Street at least is a four-lane road in the plan, so it's going to be able to carry a little bit more traffic.
So I guess a follow-up and I don't want to hog all of Russell's time. The 3D drawings that they had, I have no idea how accurate they are. They look massive and I think the intention is to look massive. So my question is, just flipping it around to the Holland, the connection over to Holland, is I noticed in the staff report, it said that they had, the staff had suggested realigning, assuming you, had suggested realigning it to avoid that transponder. And so that's not really an issue, correct?
From what we can tell, looking at it, we think it's possible to make that grade separation work. And in both cases, when you talk about a substantial amount of fill, I mean, one way you can reduce a substantial amount of fill is you can build walls. And that's what we're doing on our Peakway Southwest project. It's more expensive and...
Takes less land.
It takes less land, but it is more expensive. Now, it doesn't help the fact if you're cutting through a piece of property and you need contiguous property, it doesn't help you there, but it does help you to tighten up the footprint so the property you have left over on one side or the other isn't taken up by...
So this relates to comment one you made, which I thought was wonderful, because I assumed the developer's going to pay for the, and you said, nope. So really, if we ended up doing a retaining wall kind of structure, then we haven't taken away as much land as was shown in those 3D drawings, but we have increased the cost to the town, the state, county. Okay, so it looks, so last question I have for you and then I'll be quiet, is it looks to me from comparing the map here that you're looking at and the maps that were part of item two, that you could align the crossover 540 from coming from Holland to this main bisecting road? So it wouldn't be awkward, it would kind of flow right into the neighborhood?
Yeah, the plan that Shannon provided, we looked at that alignment a lot closer and made adjustments to make that...
Okay, good.
What we think is a feasible alignment.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I wish we had, I wish we had the ability to just say, when you move the flyover South Salem, just move it over to where this roundabout is, where the two purple blocks are. But it sounds like we haven't done that study, we haven't looked at that, we don't know.
Yeah, and I don't know, and on this drawing, I don't know exactly where that road comes in or if we have something that would give a better picture for that through the school site. I don't know. But, I mean, it obviously does encroach on that area, so we just haven't done analysis to try and move it further north, because then you basically, what you've got to do is once you cross, you've got to curve it back south and then that becomes more of an issue with the Salem Village area.
And Russell, I think that was my question, is where did the school site discussion fit into the alignment of where the flyover was going to go? Did it happen later? And I'm just trying to understand where the pieces fit.
Well, from my perspective, as far as the traffic goes, the school was not in the traffic impact analysis, so for me, it came later. And the concession we made during the zoning, that when the school actually does come in, when it becomes a reality, if it does, they would have to do an updated traffic analysis based on that, which the state would require anyway.
But I appreciate, that is very helpful. But the school, it sounds like Ms. Parker was saying that a change to, a change could potentially, without these changes, the site may not be feasible. So I feel like there's a little bit of a chicken in the egg, but I'm wondering if there's a potential to go back and reexamine the traffic with, I understand that it will happen again, once we have the school plan, but if we have a better understanding, and hearing from Ms. Parker, if the school, let's be clear, the school needs to go there. The school needs to exist in the site. This development cannot happen without a school there, in my opinion. So understanding what the traffic needs are for the site, for the school, and how that relates to how the town has looked at the site and the rezoning, I think is really critical. And if that didn't happen, and when I, can that happen?
So I think you may have two different questions there. Russell will probably have to come back to answer the traffic-related impacts of a school and what was or was not analyzed as part of the TIA. The first question you asked about whether the school came before or after we looked at the realignment of the grade-separated crossing, that realignment was analyzed as part of the Southwest Area Study before the school was a discussion. The applicant has not asked us to look at realigning that grade separation. That wasn't on the table. So, no. I do think that there would be impacts that we'd have to look at on the east side of South Salem Street, but that's currently not requested.
Thank you, that is very helpful, thank you.
Before we go to, let's make, before we get any of those comments, let's get the rest of any other public comments, if there's anybody else that wants to make a public comment? If not, then it looks like Jamie can come up.
Thank you, I just wanted to explain a couple, or answer a couple of questions that came up and then I would like Ryneal to address some of the traffic improvement questions we've had. The reason that the timing seems different is that when we first came in with the plan, the plan that you see did not include that school site area and staff asked us to go to those property owners where the school site is now and approach them about including it in. The reason they did that was they have this unwritten kind of 30% rule, or not the UDO but in your policies, of having 30% non-residential land. At that point, we were trying to make sure there was enough commercial to be consistent with the 2045 plan. So we approached those owners and said, would you be willing to join in the plan? Now, we can't, you know, they have to consent to what could go there and it's not, in their opinion, it's not interchangeable. We can't just pick the school site up and do it somewhere else and they might not be amenable to certain uses. So the reason it came about that way is that we were encouraged to include them in, we did for a commercial option, and then through the public process, we heard the school concern that you raised. And so we were directed to speak with, or connected with Wake County Schools and then the discussion kind of took off from there. So that's why it wasn't included in the TIA at first, because we didn't know that it would be an option or something that they would be interested in, and we were thrilled that they were. And so I think that it's not a, you know, we're here, you're seeing the full picture, but it's kind of interesting how it evolved and we were following the direction of staff that whole time to make sure we're serving the residents of Apex. So I would like Ryneal to just make a couple of comments about the transportation plan, I think to answer some of the questions. It's significant to note that the property owner here has already had some impacts on his property due to the alignment of 540, which was not a reality when some of these transportation plans were envisioned in the past. And so simply asking him about the impact to his land might seem simple, but it's not. This is the property owner's rights we're talking about and it is some significant impact on existing Apex resident to make those decisions.
Good evening, Ryneal Stevenson with Ramy Kempin Associates. I want to make just a couple of points about the CTP amendments that we're talking about. And it's really the two, it's the overpasses. I was just looking actually at a map, at the number of overpasses of 540, and I know you all could probably quote them all, but starting at 64, you've got US 64, you've got Beaver Creek Commons, Olive Chapel Road, Apex Barbecue, Old US 1, US 1, Viridia Parkway. So there's a lot of crossings of 540 today. Now granted, there are not as many on Salem Street, but there are a few with the Apex Peakway that seems to be, you know, moving forward to happening. And then, you know, you have 540, then you have the park, down at the park. So you've got a few there to build from, but one of the things that, I'm not a land planner, but I think with these grade separations on this property, I don't know you get any development out here anywhere. I mean, this grade separation of Salem Street, I want to sort of try to paint a picture. Yeah, those lines, that was a massive green area you saw there, I think it was 20-plus acres. And you're right, you can build walls, but I just want to kind of... And you're right, you can build walls, but I just want to kind of get an understanding. It's going to be higher above Salem Street than really any other interchange or bridge around here, because the railroad in that location already sits 10, 10 feet, 12 feet higher than Salem Street. So you're almost, if you can picture going over a double-decker interchange, that's about how high that bridge is going to be over Salem Street. And, you know, you talk about the character and what kind of that feels like and looks like, that's massive, and those walls will be massive there. So it's, you can build the walls to reduce the footprint, but that's going to basically destroy any development happening there. Couple of things too, you know, I know the long-range plans, I agree, are not always accurate in projecting the traffic, I totally agree with that, because the numbers that were showing in the model would certainly not warrant building something that massive for 5,000 cars a day, or you know, or whatever it was saying. But even with higher numbers, if you think about it, even with higher numbers than that, even if you double that and say it's going to carry 10,000 cars a day, it's going to be a while before we ever get there. And, you know, I was thinking about this, the way transportation works, and it's not the right way, but the way it works, is everything gets built after the fact, after you need it. There's either a major issue, long backups, long delays, and then something gets built even 10 years after that. And so, you know, if you're talking about looking 20 to 25, 30 years out in the future before this is needed, it's going to be another 10, you know, years beyond that before it's ever built. So what I was thinking about, and I might even, this was just during the presentation today, I was thinking, think about the changes that have happened to transportation and land use both in the last even few years. The high-density retail is not really working anymore, there's not really demand for that. Office space, there's a lot of articles you can read on office space now that's saying there's going to be fewer people in office space and, you know, stuff. So the really higher-density commercial stuff is, that's changing, and that reduces some traffic. Related to automobiles, you know, the technology with automobiles is really advancing pretty quickly too. I couldn't believe, I got in a rental car, it's been a few months ago now, and we were traveling, and it had the lane assist on, I couldn't even change the lane without fighting the car to change the lane. So that technology is advancing pretty quickly, and where I'm going with that is, I think the capacity of these roads is going to change significantly when we get to autonomous cars, and we're going to, we're not going to need as many new lanes and new infrastructure when we can get to that technology. It's going to make the cars operate more efficiently, better spacing, all that kind of stuff, you're going to pick up a significant amount of capacity there. So where I'm going with all this is that, you know, if we're talking, this is not, this is 20, 30 years out, and we've got basically property that's going to be sitting there for 20 or 30 years until these roads are, is even the need to build it. And even if it gets built in 20 or 30 years, by then, there's a lot of changes that are going to be happening, and I don't, I don't know that there will be a demand for that extra laneage. I think when the solution we're talking about for the foreseeable future is widen Salem Street. You know, if we need more capacity to get cars across 540 in particular, let's widen Salem Street, let's widen that bridge. When that, when that interchange was built with 540 in Salem, it was, I don't want to call it bare bones, but it was, at the time, it was built to accommodate the traffic there. And so, and you can see, I know we didn't get into it a lot, but this development's come in and adding turn lanes and adding a lot of laneage there to build upon that, and so the widening that would be done to Salem Street, again, I don't want to overlook that, that is hugely significant, to build a four-lane divided section on Salem Street from Apex Barbecue down to the interchange. It is set up, that is set up to be the next improvement to get capacity over 540. That's it, because the laneage is going to be there, all we have to do is build a little bridge there, which is not insignificant, but that's a lot more feasible than building a brand-new road. I just don't, I don't see a way that that gets built privately with any private dollars, these new roads and bridges, you know, just because it's going to, it's going to come down to public monies having to build it, when the private development now, private dollars are going to build Salem Street and build a lot of the capacity you need out there now. And so I know that's sort of getting a little bit, you know, off the wall there, but I just want to point out that 20, 30 years, things are going to be a lot different, and we, you know, we could sit with a vacant piece of property for 20 or 30 years before these improvements ever could possibly come up to be even considered, or we can move forward and get a lot of infrastructure there now that will service this area, including the school and widening of Salem Street and all these other roads out here for the foreseeable future. That can, that can happen and will be happening in the near future. So the other thing I want to point out too about this is that, this is not really CTP-related, but didn't want to overlook it, is that this is a chance to set the whole character between 540 and downtown, and working through, getting the laneage right, the pedestrians, the bikes, all those things correct, really sets a precedence going into downtown. And it's not, it's not a short piece, it's from 540 to Apex Barbecue, and that's a, that's a, that's a big deal. But if there's money to spend, you know, on these things, you could spend a lot more money by widening existing bridges, whether it's Apex Barbecue or whether it's Olive Chapel Road, you know, you can widen some of these, Salem Street, we can widen some of these existing streets and probably be, have, be a better use of the money and have a better chance to get those built in the short term than, you know, building, you know, brand-new roads plus these bridges that are going to be pretty significant. So just wanted to, I just wanted to throw that out there to you, because I was thinking about it, about the changes in 20 or 30 years, what it's going to be like, and just, you know, it's going to be different than it is today. And there's already a lot of crossings out there, we could just expand those if we needed some extra capacity, that'd be more feasible. But I'll be glad, any questions, me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Any additional public comments? If not, we'll close the public comment and bring it back for board, the board for discussion.
I would really prefer, and I don't know if this is possible, to have more staff input post the Wake County addition, Wake County Public Schools addition. I'd love to see another traffic study. I understand there's a timeline around what Wake County Public Schools is doing. I do really believe the school location, the site is critically important for this, for this area. It is hard to find land, as we have heard from Ms. Parker, but I feel like there was, you know, the way things unfolded, which was great with the feedback that was taken, is great, I just feel like we've missed a step in gaining this additional, the addition of the school. And I would love to have more input from the staff on that, I don't know if that's possible.
I think what I'd like to do is, let's clear up the first item, the proposed amendment to the traffic plan with removing the rail stations, just so we can get that one done and off the...
Agreed.
So, do we have a motion for, if we move the proposed rail along South Salem Street?
Your mic might be off. There's one behind your laptop, yeah, it's not picking. There you go.
So, so as I think, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think, let's just clear the proposed amendment to the traffic plan map first. So do we have a motion to remove the proposed rail and bus transit center along South Salem Street?
Yes, some moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that passes. So the proposed amendment to the transit plan, removing that middle rail station. So next, before we do the rezoning, we need to discuss the other amendment to scenario one or scenario two, or we can push it to study and not...
I'm kind of with you, I'd love to see more staff input and study specifically around, if we had known the school was going to be there, and I think we all want the school to be there, is there any other location along this section where we could have a bridge, or is that 10-foot problem that Ronald educated us on, thank you, is that exist all the way down and we're going to have a massive 20-foot wall no matter where it is? So I think that would be, I'd like to hear more from the staff on that. And because it clearly can't come out where the school is, but there's one, two, three other driveways in the middle of it. And I just tried to do a non-engineering comparison with these two maps, it looks like it could line up not exactly where we moved it or the recommend, but not too far off. So I'd love to, I'd love to hear about that. We can't possibly do that tonight.
I agree, the rezoning without the school is, we're just asking for, we're putting 1,500 potential students in an area and saying, good luck finding school, and I just don't think that that's a, that's not the right thing to do.
Is there anything we can do tonight that would allow Wake County Public Schools to proceed? Or, the way it's, the way it's been presented, we can't. If we defer this and ask for more staff study, we kind of throw a monkey wrench into the Wake County Schools' timeline.
Diane, I mean, we could not vote on the transportation amendment and still pass the rezoning without that, but then you would not agree with all the, the staff, basically...
Transportation plan, yeah, it wouldn't meet the transportation plan. Yeah, then you tie your hands with the transportation.
Yeah, you are tied.
What I was thinking is, if we all were agreed that that's where the school should be and we need a school there, and this PUD should be approved with a school, and it sounds like Wake County was moving ahead with those properties independently of the PUD, I don't know what the mechanism is to give them confidence that they can move forward. I don't think there is one, is there?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So, you know, understanding that Wake County has contractual deadlines to consider, you know, we still have, it's ultimately at the town council, and if you do have a concern that staff needs more information to look at, is there, is there a place to move this, which there may or may not be, you know, we, this has been looked at, this alignment has been studied through the Southwest Area Study quite extensively, and where it could go, but there could be some conversations that happen between now and the town council meeting that is next week. I don't know if that's enough time for anybody, but just to, if there was a desire to keep the ball moving while still providing more information for staff and council to consider, that's just an option.
I still think the overpasses are needed.
Absolutely, I agree.
Scenario one needs to happen, it doesn't need to go through the middle of the school.
What if we had a motion that said we want to approve, I'm just thinking out loud, what if we said, we had a motion and a recommendation in town council that we approve Scenario one, but giving staff and the developer wiggle room to move that instead of relocating it from down here where the, what is now on the map, all the way up to, for my example, where the two little purple pods are. So, and I'm not saying we would say where to put it, we'd say, move it so that it works for Apex to have that crossing, but works so that it feeds into this development without impeding the school.
Contingency upon flyover between Apex Barbecue Road and 540.
Yeah, there you go.
And I think that if there's a way to just reiterate that having this, we, I feel like we want to have our chicken, we want to have both, right? We want to have our cake and eat it too, we want to have our cake and eat it too, we want, we want the transportation access and we want the school. And I, I don't know, I feel like we need to send staff back with some prioritization as to how that comes out. But I stress that I would be very concerned if this went to town council without, without both.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I was trying to invent a motion that we could all...
Shannon, do you want to make a comment?
I just, without having an engineer reevaluate, which is what we did for this alignment, there, there will be substantial difficulties to shifting that crossing further north. They have both transportation and land use impacts, I believe, and I can let the applicant address any impacts on their proposal. But I think that if we were to shift it north, we would be looking at a change to the network on the east side of South Salem Street. I doubt that we could have made that connection down to Tingen and Witcher. So, you know, just looking at the way this comes across, you have to remember that this is, you know, it takes some time before it touches down. If we shift that further north, I don't, just looking at it, see how we'd make a turn for connectivity.
What if it's made further south, closer to 540, where the original...
Oh, you mean leave it?
Well, leave the, where the original one was, right next to the on-ramp and off-ramp.
So that was not supported by the roadway design engineer that we had evaluate the alignment, there were complications with that, that's why they recommended shifting it to this location.
It was too close.
It may be more easy to look for other opportunities for land than shifting the entire grade separation. I just, I don't want to, I don't think that I can come back with a better alternative.
Okay, that's good, that's, thank you. That's, that's what, thank you for that clarity.
If I could just address the board.
Sure, we, yeah, we're trying to figure this out.
I heard Shannon say to invite the applicant to clarify, I just want to clarify that due to the contractual obligations we have, we'd love to find a way to move forward tonight, even if that's with a recommendation for denial, which of course, we want a recommendation of approval, but we do not have time for an additional study in months and months. We've been, we filed in January, we've been working consistently with staff on all those areas, and the reality is, there is not another location for this crossing to work with this site and still be delivered, and so we would just appreciate moving forward.
Okay, so that's, I just want to make sure I heard you, so, thank you, so that your clarity is, even if there was a traffic study, and we knew there was a better place to move it, it's, no matter where it is, it's going to be uneconomical, it's going to take too much land from the site.
It's not only uneconomical, there's logistics reasons, and the crossing of the actual railroad.
Okay, so we don't need to do a study, because if there is a crossing anywhere along that frontage, it's going to blow up the plan, is what I hear you say.
Although I will back up and say I'm not, I, does the staff agree with that assessment?
I heard Shannon just say this is basically where the crossing is, that's what...
Okay.
They had a study, I mean, it's very thorough, it wasn't just...
Yeah. Yeah.
So I feel like this, I mean, it's basically right there, that's the only place.
Okay, no. It's good, okay, so here's what I'm hearing, if there is one that has to go there, and what I'm hearing is, it can't go there, or we blow up the school. So really, that makes it pretty clear what we have to talk about, which is more important, that school?
And the school go anywhere else.
And this PUD with these amenities.
That's, it's under contract to go in that location, and there's, it's not just Lennar's contract, there's multiple owners, there's about, I think, 10 different parcels or eight different parcels. So this is the proposal before you, and we will take all of this into account and continue to work with staff as we go forward to town council, but we'd encourage a vote tonight, please.
Two challenges we have are more traffic or less schools.
Yeah.
Both are problems for the town.
You said it earlier, and I agree with you, approving this without the school is really making a problem. So I agree with that. So if we can't move the flyover and we can't, and the developer really can't do it, we have to take their word for it, they won't do it, they can't do it with it, then I think, I think we have to deny it. I don't, it's, I'm thinking like a chess game, I don't know whether, any other move other than to deny it. We can't approve it the way it is, right?
Well, can't approve what?
Well, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Or the rezoning?
Yeah. We, yeah, thank you. One or the other, and they have to be the other.
I mean, if we don't do the transportation, we're asking for transportation issues as soon as it starts building out, in my personal opinion. Even with Salem going to four lanes, I just think we need more east-west, and we're going to eventually need to get down to the southern part of, on the other side of Salem.
And I'm very worried that if we don't do it now, I think Ronald said it very clearly, if you don't do it now, ain't going to be happening. We're going to be locked in forever, and then you're going to have all these people from the south and the north side of Salem that are trying to get across. from the south and the north side of Salem that are trying to get across there, are going to be going up the peakway, going across, going through local traffic. It's going to be a mess. And, so, help me out. If we, if we only pass the transportation Scenario One, which is kind of what I hear all of us saying, and don't take any action or deny the rezoning, have we accomplished what we want to for the town? What do you think? Yeah? In other words, we can do one, we can do item two without doing item three. We can't do item three without item two, but we can do item two. Okay, I hadn't thought of that.
But I also hate to give up the possibility for a school.
Yeah.
I mean, that's always a carrot. The school is a, is a big carrot, but without alleviating traffic, it doesn't matter, the school's still going to be impacted getting to the.
I hear you.
And if we deny the rezoning, then we can maybe work out another plan with the transportation plan.
The school is in contract with the land use, with the landowners now, outside of what Lenar's doing.
Yeah.
Why is it we couldn't just go through to the school?
Well, that's up, that's up to the school.
Well, right.
But if we approve the.
I'm denying the school, we're just.
Yeah, but if we approve the transportation plan, the school can't go there.
And if Lenar's not willing to move around on their side, I know they have contractual things outside of what we're seeing right here, but we have to look at what's in this picture, what's in this box.
Yeah.
Okay? I know contractual deadlines and things are here.
Yeah.
But that's, that's a campaign issue for us to just say yes and move forward.
Yeah, but if we said yes to Scenario One, item two Scenario One, which is staff recommendation, and we said yes to that, which we were kind of figuring out we could do, and then say no to item three, then what we're left with is two property owners, I think, that could still negotiate separately with Wake County Schools, but where we put that, the transportation plan, might make, I mean, I, again, I'm not a land engineer, I am an engineer, but I was wondering, could you just turn, rotate it 90 degrees and would it fit there? So, that's my recommendation, is, in fact, you want me to make a motion? Is that we approve the rest of item two Scenario One, and then send Wake County Schools and back to the drawing board, could they fit a school in?
Somewhere.
Somewhere else in between the realigned green line and the 540? Can they? Could they do that?
I got one question for Russell. Can Kelly Road be a flyover? And then a flyover south on 540, is that, I mean, I don't want to, I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
Oh.
540's already got one bridge on it. Kelly's already got one bridge on it.
Yeah.
You're saying Kelly goes over South Salem?
Goes over South Salem.
I hadn't thought of that.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think of others, out of the box scenarios.
Yeah, we haven't, I mean, we haven't studied that, and again, we refer back to the Southwest Area Plan where we, we did some pretty extensive review of this corridor. So, that's, that's something that would, would go well beyond the timeline for looking at this development.
Ms. Parker, you have a plan?
I can answer the question, the answer's no. Could, could the school be rotated 190 degrees and fit? And the answer is no. The environmental's there, you have two very prominent streams, and the only place that we're building the school is on that plateau in between. So, if you bring that flyover up through the middle of that for the connection that's on Scenario One, what's left are two very small, very narrow plateaus that are divided by a stream, and then there's an equal pair on the other side. I don't, I don't see that as an appropriate.
So, you end up with four, you end up with four things, and, okay.
Well, yes, we, we did four or five sketch plans of this before we could find one that would fit.
Okay. So. So, approving the transportation plan, Scenario One, means the school isn't going to go there, is what we just heard. Okay. Clarity?
It's a tough one.
Well, I think Scenario One on the transportation plan is needed badly. You know, we don't, like you said, if you don't do it now, you'll never do it. Although it really is not good for the school, but, and I hate that.
I. There's going to be, you know, whether it's Lenar or. There's got. We, we have to, we, we have to have the school.
If, if you're going to have 1,300, right, 1,300 or something.
But, but, and somebody here asked the question earlier, could the school have gone somewhere else? And we didn't really get an answer. The answer was, we never considered that because it was already underway.
Right.
So, if we push the reset button tonight, and I apologize because lots and lots of time and effort's gone in, and if we say the most important thing is the transportation plan, followed by having a school when this site is developed, then we've, we've now determined that somebody has to go do the work and say, "Transportation plan is here, that, we're not changing that, and there's, we want a school here, they want a school here, let's figure out where the school can go." Correct. Oh, PS, so just for bonus points, if we have a flyover, the school could go on the other side of South Salem in the railroad tracks and still be adjacent to this. I don't think it's walkable. That's a problem.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, so my motion is that we.
Let's do the transportation plan.
Transport, item number two, transportation plan, we approve Scenario One.
Amendment for Scenario One, okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'd second that.
Second by Reggie. All those in favor of transportation plan amendment, Scenario Number One, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, that passes unanimously. Now, for the rezoning, which is case CZ01. My paperwork here.
CZ01, we need a lot of work for council to even understand it.
Yep.
Just the amount of time that we've spent on it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, and there's a lot of conditions that staff wants, so we could, I mean, we are just the recommending board to council, so we just, one option is just to deny it based on, and we have to provide the reasons to Diane, so if we, if we want to vote to deny the rezoning, we need to come up with the reasons why. And I think one is that the school won't fit, and so we can't, we don't want 1,700 homes going out without the possibility of a school.
And it would be then inconsistent with the transportation plan we just voted on?
Correct.
Yes.
The way they presented it.
Yes.
Okay.
So, everybody, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. So, I need a motion from somebody.
Everybody's thinking.
I'm trying to figure out a word, I mean.
Well, I think we, we just, I mean, the motion would just be that we deny the rezoning plan.
Yeah.
That also the land, I mean, I guess.
Both.
Can, we, the land use amendment could be pulled out separately.
Yes, it needs to be brought out separately.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to demand rezoning, number 20 CZ01. He took one on the.
What about the land use amendment? So, remember that one partial up in the, upper right?
Do you want him to combine those two motions?
No, I think they need to be separate.
Okay.
So.
So, I second the motion for the, to deny the rezoning.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to deny the rezoning 20 CZ01.
You need the land use map over.
Okay, all right. So.
Okay, I'll do, okay, land use map. So, I, I move that we deny the land use map amendment for PIN Indian 944.
Okay. I have a motion to deny the land use amendment.
I second that.
Can we second that? All those in favor of denying the land use amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And now, Tim.
All right, I'll make a recommendation to deny rezoning 20 CZ01. He took one on the.
Okay, I have a motion to deny.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of denial of rezoning 20 CZ01, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'm sorry, I need help.
Okay.
Mark Steele with the land use map amendment making the motion, Reverend O'Scarner second. I have Tim Marroyal on the rezoning, but I didn't.
Mark.
Mark, Mark Steele, second.
Okay, and then the rezoning, I need, I've heard a couple of things, but I want to make sure that I have all this correct.
Okay.
So, the 2045 land use map will be inconsistent since you didn't change the one.
Right.
The Apex transportation plan will be inconsistent.
And the school, lack of a school, since the, the county has said the school can't go where they want it to go, we, we can't in good conscience.
Wait a second.
I just have to read each one because there's like.
She's got to fill out the form.
There's like tall items.
Yep.
So, the legislative consideration of consistency with 2045 land use map is inconsistent. Compatibility with use appropriateness for proposed location and compatibility with character of surrounding land uses.
I think that applies if you say that this, they said the school can't go there if, with, based on the transportation plan, then it would be incompatible.
Okay. Next one. Design minimizes adverse impact, this does include significant adverse impacts on front lands regarding tra, traffic, service or delivery.
Yes, service, because school is a service.
Yeah, that's probably better than the one, the other one, unless you want both.
Well, here's the school on number six, impact on public facilities, including roads, potable water, wastewater facilities, parks, schools, fire and out.
Yes.
Yes.
So, you said school won't fit with the transportation plan.
Right.
Actually, can you word it this way? The developers in Wake County Public Schools said the school wouldn't fit given the way they've designed it, and we wouldn't approve it without a school. How's that? That way it doesn't, it's not, we're not saying the school won't fit. We're saying we would want this to have a school, the school, the developer in Wake County said won't fit the way the transportation plan is, so.
So, developer in Wake County Public Schools says the school not fit with the transportation plan the way that they have designed it.
Mm-hmm. I was going to ask for you to make a note about the discussion we had, that it's some, it would be great if someone, meaning the developer in Wake County, said, "Could it go anywhere else?" But I don't know how you communicate that to the council. Is it part of these legislative concerns, or is that separate?
It'd just be a note that we.
A note?
Okay. We like what, I mean, I like what Lenar's trying to do. We really do.
Me too.
I mean, you.
I'm sorry, I'm not going there anymore.
Okay.
The next one is how safety and welfare.
I don't think, huh, no, I don't think it's, no.
Not. Detrimental to adjacent property?
No.
Nope.
Well, well, I think if, no, the rezoning is not detrimental, yeah.
That's not the reason for the.
Yeah, denied.
So, it's not, okay. Does not constitute nuisance or hazard?
No.
No?
No.
So, yeah, and basically, the recommendation for denial doesn't have anywhere to put notes, but I can figure out something once you guys vote.
Okay, well, we did vote.
We did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we voted.
Y'all went so fast, I wasn't.
Yeah, we voted.
We voted, so.
Usually I'm just by mommy and I'm yelling.
Yeah.
Is that what it was?
Yes.
Okay, so, there's an area that talks about dissenting votes, but I'll just, I can add notes from you all if you want me to add notes.
Yeah, that we would, we love the product, and we would love to see them go back to the drawing board and see whether a school could fit somewhere else on the property.
And if they can make it work within the transportation plan, because we do need, I still think we do.
Yes, you're right.
We do.
You're right.
We're not doing this town service if we don't provide.
Yeah.
The transportation plan.
Right. That, wasn't that the biggest dissatisfaction in the survey we did last year?
Yes.
So, I didn't catch, I know the gist of it, but I've noted to town council, love the product, would like to send go back to drawing board and see if the school, that somewhere else on the property. So, something about transportation.
I'll just say, we've, that the transportation plan outweighs the need of the.
Feedback from the town residents has been, traffic is an issue.
Yeah, number one issue.
Priority during the surveys.
Yeah.
For the 2045 land use map.
Right.
Okay. All right, I think that closes the public hearing, and now we can move on to new business. Amanda? Got a few UDOs to go through.
I don't think we can continue if one of us takes a vibrate, but if I run.
No. Yeah, I could actually, it's been almost three hours.
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to pay attention, but I'll.
We need a motion for.
Recession, is that what it's called?
Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
Motion.
Yes.
Seventy-second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. I was having my legs crossed.
Yeah.
Two people, just one to the left and one to the right.
We go left or right? Action Brady? Yes, sir, my friend. How are you? Doing good, I'm a man, I go out there. You never know where this is going to take us. No, I wanted to hear what was going on. I didn't expect it to take that long, but I knew it would take a while. I just thought. I just thought he said the right one. Diane, is this TV on? Or this screen? That right there, or my name, just teacher.
It, it does if they turn it on. I think it's just turned off. There's a button, turn it off, it should show, it's showing up here, but if you want to hold it on. I just follow the one that I'm here, shut down. On, on my phone. It's all good.
Another computer.
Oh, thank you, I'm, I'm good, thank you. That's something I want to dig in about that. Just being a support, sure. I guess there was hail and thunderstorm all the way here?
Ring, ring, ring coming down, down, down?
No, it's like it's blowing, I don't know.
I'm going to Reggie's house tonight, give me some butter.
I have no idea what's going to happen. I think my wife and daughter already ate. You're on your own, Jack.
Oh, man. I want some of that jerk shrimp.
Oh, man, I was, I was, threw a little too spicy for my wife, but you know what? I enjoyed it.
Just your words, the live scene is still happening.
Oh, thank you.
I did, which is something I can do is just.
Really, really dry?
I got my door shut.
Am I drinking black wine or are you? I was like, I was, I almost was eating it, I was like.
Or just get rid of the timeout. Yeah, they, they, yeah, they go to sleep.
Yeah, thank you.
The time I've been doing that, that was probably the most difficult one, because there was two cases.
Priorities, priority one and two.
There wasn't an easy, there was no easy answer, and it wasn't.
You've been going to the office or still working from home?
Working from home all the time, man.
You know, the time I've been doing that, that was probably the most difficult one, because there was two cases.
Two priorities, priority one and two.
There wasn't an easy, there was no easy answer, and it wasn't. You been going to the office or still working at home?
Working all the time. I haven't had a really hard one.
What's that? Oh. Oh, can you see us? Yes, we are. Hey, hey? You need Bonnie's?
Ready, Amanda? Okay. Tell Bonnie to come in. Bonnie?
What is, wait, someone, we figured out the password last time, what was it?
One, two, three, check capital T, train.
One, two, three.
Train with capital T.
Oh, you're good.
Everybody need fixing, isn't it?
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. July thirteenth, twenty twenty, planning board back into session, and Amanda's going to go over some UDO amendments.
Okay, so we have six amendments for you today, and the first three are requested by the Planning Committee of the Town Council, and they are all related to resource conservation area. So the First Amendment is a proposal to increase the RCA reduction that can be approved by Town Council and add additional performance standards for such reduction, and this would apply for the planned unit development and traditional neighborhood development zoning districts. So currently, the Town Council can approve up to a two percent reduction in the amount of RCA for developments. In the PUD, it's if two certain standards are met, or one of two, either a non-residential component is present or there's an overall density of six units per acre or more. There's no performance standards in the traditional neighborhood development zoning district. So the proposal is to add environmental measures as performance standards in both districts in order to receive an RCA reduction of up to ten percent. And so these environmental measures include the installation of solar on a certain number or percentage of single-family or townhouse lots, or on a certain number or percentage of multifamily mixed-use or non-residential buildings. And then there's a threshold provided for when that installation has to be completed. Another option is the installation of a geothermal system for a certain number or percentage of units within the development, or energy efficiency standards that exceed minimum building code requirements. And so these are the same performance measures proposed for both the PUD and the TND districts. Any questions on that amendment?
When it says a certain number or percentage, is it just, it could be anything?
So the intent is to allow council to consider what's being offered in context with what's being proposed.
Okay.
So, you know, a proposal for solar on one house might be a big deal if only ten houses are proposed, but a totally different scenario if there's a hundred or five hundred, so.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
I have a dumb math question. It says, the RCA may be reduced by Town Council by no more than ten percent. Does that mean ten percent of thirty percent, for example, meaning three percent? Or does it mean, let's say the RCA was supposed to be thirty percent based on where it is in town, then they could actually reduce it from thirty to twenty?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I think you might want to clear it out, or if this is all clear to everybody who wrote it, then I'm the only one.
That's the way it's been done. There have been RCA reductions granted in the past.
Yeah.
And currently, two percent, so in an area where twenty-five percent is required, twenty-three percent has been provided.
So that's the way we've been using it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's, so that's a pretty big jump. That could be a pretty big jump.
Right.
Right, okay.
They would have to add one of these or all of these things?
It's one of.
One of.
It's not all.
Yeah, one or more.
It is up to council.
Oh.
It could be that solar's not enough, and they want to see, you know, several things. So really, the idea is to grant flexibility to council, given the context of the project and what's being offered.
I got it, I got it. So that's why it's a little vague on purpose?
Yes.
Like where it says exceeds minimum standards, it doesn't say, well, would that be, you know, whatever, Sierra sixteen or something, so.
Right.
I get it.
Okay. So the Second Amendment is what was initially proposed, let me just read what was initially proposed. Amendments to the establishment of RCA in order to reduce the ratio of off-site RCA to onsite RCA, and to amend the standards and process for the approval of off-site RCA. So when a developer can't meet all of their RCA requirements easily onsite, the UDO currently allows for the developer to look off-site, but that current ratio is one and a half. You've got to basically provide more off-site RCA than what's required, one and a half to one. And so as the Planning Committee was discussing this item, they really felt like they needed some more information staffing and more time to look at this, but what we agreed on, or the Planning Committee agreed on, was to remove the requirement that off-site RCA be required to receive approval by Town Council in a quasi-judicial public hearing. That's a, you know, onerous process, and we feel that is one of the hurdles to preventing developers from using off-site RCA as a source. And so for right now, the only portion of what was advertised, the amendment, the only portion of the amendment of what was advertised that we're proceeding with is to remove the requirement that council approve the off-site RCA. So basically, if you meet all the standards that are currently listed in the UDO, then you can use off-site RCA.
Makes sense.
Okay.
And number three, which is in order to either decrease or increase the amount of RCA required, depending on where you are in town. So the proposed, what's proposed to change, for development located south and west, for development located south and west of five forty, currently, the requirement is twenty-five percent. The proposal is to increase that requirement to thirty percent for single-family and townhome developments, and leave it as twenty-five percent for multifamily, mixed-use, and non-residential. The other change proposed in the amount of RCA required is for any development that is inside the peakway to have a reduction from twenty percent currently to ten percent. Now, keep in mind, if you're in the small-town character area, there's no RCA required, but otherwise, to reduce that requirement, and the intent of this is to encourage infill and redevelopment inside the peakway. So those are the two changes, other than, you know, necessary, you know, clarifications to the amount of RCA required. Any questions on that item?
No.
Okay, the last three amendments are proposed by staff, planning staff. Item four is to add subsection four two one I, prohibited uses in residential districts, in order to prohibit parking on residential property that is not accessory to the residential use. So what this would include, but is not limited to, is student parking, parking for a nearby special event, and off-site parking for another use. And student parking would be defined as parking at a residence on, excuse me, as parking at a residence or on a residential lot for the purpose of coming and going from a vehicle to a school or from a school to a vehicle. This definition of student parking shall not apply to students who reside at the home.
So this is to get rid of all the parking around Apex High School, where they pay.
And Apex Friendship.
Yeah, we're having that problem in Apex Friendship, too.
And they pay, and they, they basically turn into a parking lot during the day.
Yep.
We were doing that in the eighties, I mean, that's been going on a long time.
Would this, would this also help with the sort of casual, the ones they're talking about where people were trying to make money, I think, off it? But this, I think, the way it's worded would help our situation where we have people that are just parking on a residential street and then cutting through people's yards to get to school. So this, would this help with enforcing that?
Well, no, this wouldn't, this, this doesn't have to do with how people, pedestrians crisscross properties.
No, I'm talking about like high school kids who come in, park in front of a house that they don't know anybody.
Oh, no, if you're, if, if parking is allowed on a public street, then it doesn't matter if it's a student or who, or who matters.
So if we want to prohibit parking, that's something different than.
That's, that's completely different. This is on a residential lot.
Yeah. Got it.
Many complaints?
We have had complaints, yes.
I assumed, but didn't want to do it explicitly, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, any other questions on that one? Okay. The next amendment is to the building standards in the small-town character overlay district in order to exempt multifamily dwellings over four units from the prohibition of slab-on-grade foundations. So there are some areas where apartments more than four units are either allowed or, are allowed in appropriate small-town character, but the ordinance doesn't allow there to be slab-on-grade foundations, and it's more difficult to build an apartment, even a small apartment building, if you have a raised foundation. And so the proposal is to remove that prohibition.
Would that only be for apartments and not townhomes?
This is only for multifamily structures containing more than four units. So townhomes are considered single-family.
And that's only in the.
But there's not many places in small-town character where townhomes are allowed.
Yes, so that's what I was, this is only in the downtown overlay.
There's, there's very, there's very few, and I think where it is, it might be a special use permit. I have to look at the, at the use table.
Okay.
And?
Amanda, can we, can we backtrack to that four point two point one?
Mm-hmm.
To the residential districts prohibited uses? I was trying to think, I know the scenario is what we're talking about, where we have high school students parking in adjacent properties and turning into parking lots, but this is also extending further into any type of special event.
It's already prohibited because people, it's not, you're not allowed to do a commercial parking lot on those types of properties. We had the school, so if you have a property owner who says that she did not receive payment, and there continues a lot of people's parking on her property. There's been forty cars on that property.
Yeah.
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 And so the reason this worded this way is to get at folks who actually are not charging. We have had people try to charge during the evening, so the police shut them down.
Yeah.
So that's not.
I just wonder if it, if it eventually can extend into, like, say there's a venue, and they, they own property next to it in, during this.
It has to be sound for commercial use. So if you're in a venue, it's a property, you just need to rezonate.
Yeah. So if, so if I owned a bar, or, sorry, a pub, and I had my house next door, I couldn't let people park there that were going to the.
That's supposed to.
That's correct.
Yeah, because it's residential.
Yeah, and it sounds like football games, this would cover football games, which is a problem area also at the high schools, where people are coming not to school, they're going to the football game.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that, that particular issue at such a time, but it's got to be covered out of that.
It would cover it, okay.
And I believe the complaints we received were geared at the, during the day.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can this be then restricted to during daytime hours? What I wouldn't want to do is eventually, you know, I know no one's most likely going to enforce the things that are not issues, but sometimes you wind up creating it, you know, this regulation where a neighbor could get mad at another neighbor because once a year, they, you know, have an event or something, and they own the property. You have cars coming to park on the property, they don't like it, I guess, in some manner. I just wonder, at what point is it, you know, this is my.
It's a party event without a special, without a temporary use permit, and if they get the temporary use permit, the parking's approved as part of it.
Hmm, but you're just saying, you decide to have a big party.
All right, you have, you have a neighborhood party?
Well, if it.
Everybody's parking here?
No, that's, that's a standard residential use, to have gatherings at your home. It's when, it's basically when people are charging is the main issue, and we believe she charged as well, we just couldn't prove it.
Okay. I just don't, I don't want to wind up overreaching and then wind up neighbor against neighbor kind of things.
Right, and, and that's why this included parking that is not accessory to the residential use, so something that's not typical to be associated with the residential use would not be permitted.
I understand.
Excellent, good questions.
And finally, number six. This is an amendment to the design standards in Article Nine applicability, in order to expand the applicability of design standards for residential development to all districts while retaining the state-required exemption for one- and two-family dwellings. So there's certain design standards that don't apply to apartment complexes right now that would be beneficial, and typically, we don't have an issue with, but we don't want to run into the issue where we, where we do have a problem. And so this would apply the residential, these standards to all residential development in all zoning districts excluding one- and two-family dwellings. And planning staff is recommending approval of these UDO amendments, and I can answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions for Amanda? Any reason to break them out, or do we, okay, so we just need a motion?
Well, yep.
Move, approve all six?
All six.
Okay, have a motion to approve all six. Seconded by Reggie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. So I thank everybody for their time. This was a long one for only a few cases, but.
It's been a while.
You got a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, guys, and ladies.
Now, was that our record-long meeting? No, I don't.
No.
We've gone to nine o'clock.